Mayor, Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Potter.
Here.
Mr. Farkas.
Here.
Mr. LeBron.
Here.
Mr. Carrasso.
Here.
Ms. Marquez.
Here.
Mr. Olazinski.
Here.
Mr. Maycore.
Here.
Chairman Piettonza.
Here.
Mr. Scalza.
Here.
Mr. Ruth.
Here.
And Mr. Robert has an excused absence due to illness.
Okay. First on the agenda is Planning Board Reorganization Meeting Minutes of January 6, 2021. You've all read the minutes. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, can someone identify themselves who made the second?
Motion by Mr. Potter. Second by Ms. Marquez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Very good. Okay, next on the agenda, there are no resolutions. Next on the agenda is public hearing. Application PB 012021, William and Carrie DeFalco, 25 Ackerman Avenue, Block 83, Lots 10 and 11. Applicant is seeking variances to build a new single-family home.
Chairman, before we proceed, being that this is our first meeting as a zoning board as well, you go over the parameters a little bit and the procedure for this type of body. The first, our mayor and councilman are not allowed to take part in this meeting. So they can obviously listen, they can hear what's going on, but they're not allowed to take part on this meeting. Reason being, variance matters, they can be appealed to the mayor and council, and it would not be appropriate if a councilperson voted on an application and then heard it on appeal. So for that reason, these two class members must sit out and they can observe. The other, the other point I'd like to make is if John Barry could give a little discussion about the difference between the planning board and the zoning.
Sure. Neil, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
So the, the first application this evening we have is an application for a single-family, a new single-family home, as we mentioned, and some, several bulk variances associated with that. The planning board was used to only seeing applications for site plan approvals and subdivision approvals. Single-family homes don't require a site plan approval before the board. So there's certain aspects of the project, things like grading, drainage, things like that, that don't typically get reviewed at the board level. They would be reviewed as part of a later engineering review for, for the building permits. So some of the, the more site-specific issues that the planning board would typically review and opine on are not necessarily things that we need to concern ourselves with in the context of a single-family home as we had in the first application. So we're here the applicant's presentation and go through a discussion of the relief that they were, they require tonight. When it comes to the second application, maybe, maybe it makes sense to get through the first one and then we can kind of have a, have an overview of the application moving into the, the second one. What do you think, Neil?
That's fine, sure. But if you can, just a general distinction between the planning board and the zoning board. The, specifically the use, the different types of variances that cannot be heard by a planning board.
Right, so the, as I said, the zoning board would typically hear applications for a single-family house for addition to an existing house, things like that. Those are, the relief that is required is for C-variance relief, we call it. That's, that's bulk standards related to building dimensions, setbacks, building coverage, impervious coverage on the lots, things like that. And then there are use variance applications, which is what we'll deal with in the second application tonight, so I was gonna wait and talk about that when we kicked off the second application, but I can do it now. Use variance applications are essentially when an applicant seeks to have a use permitted that is not allowed in the zoning ordinance in, in a particular zone. That'll be the kind of application we're considering later this evening. There are other things that fall within that category, things related to density and particular types of excessive height variances. Expansion of non-conforming uses really thought of as, as a use that's been grandfathered in but is no longer permitted, if you want to expand one of those, that requires a D-variance, which is within the, the realm of the zoning board. So those applications require a heightened level of scrutiny in the municipal land use law and, and all that's come about over the years. Any application for a D-variance requires five affirmative votes. So we'll have seven total members, or seven total voting members participating. Any application for a D-variance requires five affirmative votes, so it's not just a simple majority. In addition, the applicant really has to provide a showing that there are special reasons to permit the use, which we can listen to and then review as the applications go on. And that there's, what we call the negative criteria is met, which means that there's no detriment to the, that there's no substantial detriment to the neighbors, to the surrounding area, to the general welfare, the general public, and that also the application can be reconciled with its omission from the zoning ordinance and can be reconciled with the borough's master plan. And that there's no significant detriment to either the master plan or the zoning ordinance by, by permitting the use. So that's the quick rundown. It's a lot to absorb and I know for many of you, but Neil's here, I'm here, so that we can answer questions and, and help out as the applications go along. I think we're probably best served by getting into it unless anybody has any specific questions to start.
John, this is, uh, this is Dave. One question you may want to let everybody know, what's the, what's the process of each, of listening to each one? When does the audience, when are they able to comment?
Sure.
Dave, I'm gonna answer that question. Our chairman has a process with which we discussed so initially. He'll introduce the attorney for the applicant, and then that person will in fact proceed with his testimony and his people, and then we would probably move back to, if there are any board questions at that point in time, but then you would ask for your professionals to then speak on the behalf of the board here. And then at some point after all of that happens, then the people who wish to speak from the public would be asked to hear, to speak just on this hearing only. And then they would go back into final discussion and any vote if everyone was ready to do that. But, uh, but I think the chairman has a process and a method, so I think we should proceed with that and introduce Mr. Barlow, who represents the first applicant.
Hey. The applicant and their, are the applicants and the, their representative in attendance?
Yes, sir. My name is, good evening, members of the planning board, acting in your capacity as a zoning board, the board's professionals. My name is Thomas Barlow. I'm an attorney. I represent Mr. and Mrs. DeFalco, who are the owners of 25 Ackerman Avenue, which is Block 83, Lots 10 and 11. As an initial matter, I would ask that either Ms. Marlowe or Mr. Marata, if they could confirm that the board has received the notices, proof of mailing, and affidavits, and that the board has jurisdiction.
I have been through your notices and received the affidavit of publication as well as all of your certified notices for your 200-foot list, and they all seem to be in order. Taxes are paid and up to date and all fees have been received. And I would suggest that there would be no problem with proceeding.
Thank you very much. Jurisdiction, there's jurisdiction for this matter.
Thank you, sir. The DeFalcos purchased this home in December of 2019. It was a foreclosure. My understanding is that at the time of the closing, the house was in a very poor state, and it had not been lived in or maintained for quite some time. It ended up in foreclosure. The bank took ownership of the property and the DeFalcos purchased it. Mr. and Mrs. DeFalco were in their 60s. They currently live in East Brunswick, less than three miles away, and they bought the property with the intention of downsizing, selling their current house and building a one-level house, so they don't have to deal with stairs and a second floor at the site of 25 Ackerman. Based on the size of the existing lot and the bulk requirements of the R8 zone, there are several variances that are needed. Minimum lot area is 5,128 square feet, where 8,000 is required. Minimum lot width is 49.61 feet, where 80 is required under the bulk standard. Lot coverage is proposed at 32.1%, where 25% is the standard. Impervious lot coverage of 42.8% is proposed, where 40 is permitted. And there is the minimum distance between buildings, where 16.2 feet is present and 20 feet is required. I would just note, and Mr. Barry's report points out, that this last one is really not in our control as it deals with the houses on either side. We comply with the 10-foot side yard set box on both sides. It just so happens that the, the neighbors on both sides are within the 10-foot setback. So while we comply with our own setbacks, we really have no control over the setbacks of the two adjacent property owners. So if you look at the site plan of the variances from the bulk standards, there were actually five existing from the old home. There were ones that we could control to some degree, and we have a design that got four, got rid of four of the five previously existing one. One, it's a less intense use, but we resulted in two new variances that are required. There were pre-existing non-conformities for front and side yard setback that the applicant is correcting, and we've designed a project that does not require any relief there.
Philip.
We believe that after hearing the testimony from Mr. Les Walker, our engineer, and Robert Lombardi, our architect, our architect, along with the builder and the owner, if, if necessary, that the variances can be granted consistent with the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinances and the master plan. It will allow a new beautiful, single-family home to replace one that had been in a very poor condition. I'm in receipt of the report of Mr. Barry. The board's plan are dated. The most recent amendment is actually dated today. There was a, I believe, a, just a typo that was corrected from the January 27th report. It's my intention to have my witnesses address any issues raised in his report as they testify. If the board has a different protocol, please let me know. Unless there are any preliminary questions, I would call Mr. Walker, our engineer, as our first witness, sir? If that's okay?
Yes, the, just first, I just need to make a correction. The mayor and council members of the board are permitted to act on this. It's not a D-variance. So I just want to let them know I was thinking of the next application.
Understood. We have no, this is just the bulk standards. It's not a D-variance at all. Thank you, Mr. Marata.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
Can we, can we have your witness warning, please?
Mr. Walker, do you raise your right hand? Mimi, do you, or Mr. Marata?
I don't normally do it, but I would ask Neil to do it.
Yeah, sure. Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And can you state your name for the record?
Yeah, Leslie Walker.
Bad proceed?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, you're an engineer, professional engineer with, could you give us your professional credentials?
Sure. I have a bachelor's and master's degree from Rutgers University in civil engineering. I've been doing land development for over 20 years. I've served as the president of Meridian for the last four years. I'm Meridian Engineering, located in Edison. I've testified in boards all over the state, but never in Milltown. But, but, you know, all of the, the towns around, South Brunswick, South Plainfield, New Brunswick, Woodbridge, Edison, the entire area. Never, never had the pleasure for this board.
Okay. Ms. Marlowe may need your, if you could just give us your professional address, sir?
And because the industry has banking restrictions.
Meridian Engineering is located 1199 Ambly Avenue, Suite 1D in Edison, New Jersey, 08237. And I also hold a professional engine, current professional engineering license in New Jersey and several other states.
And have your credentials always been accepted as an expert in the field of engineering?
They have.
Mr. Marata, I would offer Mr. Walker as an expert in engineering?
I have no objection.
Okay. Mr. Walker, would you agree, having reviewed both the architectural plans and having prepared your own site plans, that the proposed house has taken into account as best it can the bulk standards based on the lot size and the lot layout?
Yeah, the, the, most of the bulk standards are met. The only, the only two that, that are, that are new, you know, that, that we're making worse are the lot coverage and impervious coverage. A lot of that stems from the, the lot being undersized and the desire to have a one-story house as opposed to, you know, putting it upstairs and trying to reduce the footprint.
Okay, and that would really be the way to kind of reduce the footprint is you'd have to put a second floor on, but then that would require stairs, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can we throw up the site plan real quick, or do you, I have it. If I, you want me to share my screen, or do you want to share yours, Mr. Walker?
I, I have it here. I can share it.
Okay.
You should have the ability to do that.
Okay.
Given everybody.
Mr. Marata, just as a housekeeping, if the plans have been submitted already, do you still want them marked A1, A2 as we go along, or I don't know what your pleasure is?
That, I prefer that if you can mark them as we go along.
Okay, so this is the first page of the site plan. And what's the date on that, Mr. Walker?
The date of our plans. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be.
None of them are, for anyone.
October 19th of 2020.
Okay, and if you could just maybe zoom in a little on the 200-foot area for us to start. Now, this application actually involves two even more undersized lots that are contiguous and are being utilized to build the one house on, correct?
That's right.
And on that section of Ackerman Avenue, the lot sizes seem to be pretty consistent in terms of the, they have small widths and more depth to them. Is that a fair statement?
That's right. The, the, the other house that faces, that faces Ackerman next door, I believe it's number 27. That's, that's two parcels wide, the same width and, and foot deeper. And then the, the corner lots, because of the defundage on two roads, they, they each take up three lots.
And again, to the west on Block 82, you have lots 12 through 16, which are also lots that are not that wide, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and if we, if we just go over briefly to the bulk requirements, and if you want to just enlarge that. So the, the two existing non-conformities are with regards to the area and the lot width, correct?
That's right, and this project does not change either of those conditions.
So that's the existing condition. There, there's no control that the applicant has over that, correct?
None at all.
Okay, and then in terms of the existing conditions that had been present with the existing rule, they had violated the front yard setback and the minimum side yard setback, and we're correcting that deficiency, correct?
That's right, and as well as two accessory setbacks for the shed that's been removed.
Okay, so on the bottom where the accessory building, those are two more existing deficiencies that have been taken out by getting rid of the shed, and, and we're not proposing anything there, correct?
That's correct.
And the minimum distance between buildings, while we comply with the side yard setbacks, then we have more than 10 feet on both sides, we have an issue because of the adjacent properties, correct?
That's correct. If, if all of the lots had the, the required 10-foot side yard setback, then it would, it would just fall in line, that they would have that 20-foot minimum between buildings. But because the, the side yards for, for the two adjacent lots are substandard, that, that creates a condition where we, we technically have a variance for, for building separation.
And, and really, the only way to even try and address that would be to squeeze the building together.
That's right, and, and the, the existing, the, the proposed dwelling is only 26 foot, I believe 26 feet 8 inches wide. So it's already rather narrow.
Okay, so then the only two, what I would call a new bulk deficiencies we have are the lot coverage and the impervious coverage. And is it fair to say, again, they're, they're just a function of, we're building a small house, but it, the lot is what the lot is?
Right, if, if the lot, if the lot was a conforming size, if, if it had the 8,000 square feet, but we would be well, well within the, the allowable lot coverage and impervious coverage, but because of the undersized lot, although the house isn't, isn't overly large, those, those variances are triggered.
I, I believe the house is less than 1,700 square feet, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Now, if I could just draw your attention briefly to Mr. Barry's report. On page four of his report, under heading number three, he raised a question about the size of the driveway in order to comply with the parking requirement.
Sure, so I'll just flip to, to page two of our site plan.
Thank you.
We don't, we don't have it, we don't have it labeled here. This is the, the, the middle drawing is our dimensioning and labeling. So you can see here perpendicular to the right of way is 20.2 feet. And then when you would run down the side of the driveway on, on the right side or the, the east side, you have just over 21 feet to the right of way. And then on the other side is, is over 26 feet to the right of way. So it does meet the standard to provide, to count as a parking space.
Okay, and the, the kind of the dotted X within the rectangle is kind of dimensions for the 9 by 18 RSIS car standard, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Mr. Marata, I would just mark the first page of the site plan as A1 and the second page as A2, if that's acceptable.
Yes, maybe if you can mark them.
Noted that from the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, and then if we could, on page three of Mr. Barry's report, as to number two, you addressed the minimum distance between the buildings. Again, not, not something that we have control over, but we are improving the condition as he pointed out.
That's, that's right. We're improving the condition.
Okay. Can you just zoom out a little on the second page, or just, if there's anything else I want to ask you about regards to that? Okay, and the, the site plan is on there along with some, just the plantings and, and other issues that you raised, correct?
That, that's correct. I mean, the, the, a couple of new street trees where there are none now. We're gonna provide an extension of the, the, the public sidewalk. Six, six shrubs along the, the foundation of the, the porch. A dry well that will address any additional runoff that would have occurred from the, the increase in impervious on the site. The positive drainage, drainage that'll, that'll carry the water away from the adjacent homes in a manner so that it doesn't, doesn't cause us a problem and doesn't cause them a problem.
So you're, we're putting in the sidewalk, we're putting in street trees, and we have landscaping in front of the home, correct?
That's right.
And just as a general matter, there, I know there's a lot of people on this meeting. Under the municipal land use law, we have to make sure that our project doesn't cause any water to go off-site to a greater degree than exists, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and the dry well, again, will keep any water on, on-site and improve that condition, correct?
It will, it'll mitigate any increases that would have happened due to the increase in impervious.
It's my understanding, and Mr. Barry put it on the record before, that there's no engineering report per se. You haven't been giving an engineering report, but you understand that if, if the application is successful, that as part of the building process, I'm sure there will be municipal standards that have to be abided by, and the house will be built to RSIS standards, correct?
I'm sorry, was that, was that for me, Tom?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that the, all, all the municipal standards will be met and, as well as RSIS.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further for Mr. Walker at this time. I don't know if the, if the board's practice is to ask the professionals questions as they go, or save them for the end, but if the board has any questions for Mr. Walker, otherwise I'll move on to my architect.
I, I do.
I'll defer to the chair, but we can ask questions as we go along.
That's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Jim Blon. If you, if we can, I'd like to just ask a few questions of the engineer.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Mr. Walker, the, the dry well, how, how is that constructed? It's just, just like, it's not a retaining basin, is it? It's...
No, it's, it's, it's almost, they're, they're, they're plastic. I could show you the detail that's under plan here. They're a plastic, like a half-pipe. It's an arch. And, and it's open at the bottom. It's surrounded by stone, fa- fabric, fabric lining. There you go. It's, it's roughly, it's roughly eight and a half feet long, and then, and then it's just one, one section of the Coltech unit. So it's like, it's like a half-pipe, and it just provides an, an open storage for the water to perk into the ground.
Okay, similar, I guess, to a sitter, and it's not, not open or mosquito-borne type.
Not at all. There, there's no, the, the only, the only external opening is for an inspection port, so that, you know, like a, like a, it looks like a, a, a cleanout. So you could just take a look in there, and if it's backing up, you'll know there's a problem with it, but other, otherwise there's no open.
Like, no, no access for children or anything like that?
Not at all, no.
Next question. I'm, I'm looking at the middle diagram, and actually, all of them, they talk about, I guess it says, "Proposed 1695 square foot one-story single-family dwelling", but then shortly, just below that, it says, "Living space 1364. The garage is 280", but it seems like there's about a 330 square footage difference between that 1695 and 1364. Am I reading that? What, what is the difference there between the proposed 1695 and the living space 13?
I would have to defer to the architect. I, I know that there was a, a small discrepancy between our plan for total square feet and theirs. It's, it's actually slightly smaller.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that for the, I apologize. All right. And that's it for me. Thank you, Chairman.
Good, Chairman. I do have a question I'd like Lou Placanta to address on the dry well.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a question for Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker, have any soil investigations been done relative to the design of the dry well?
Not yet, and, and once we mobilize on site with, with a machine, we will dig, dig down to verify that, that we're not into the groundwater. It's a very shallow system, so we don't anticipate that. And just to verify that the perk, sometimes you, you'll run into a situation, the perk is, is slower than, than what, what the published soil surveys would, would tell you. And maybe you have to add a second row, or you have to make it slightly longer. Sometimes, sometimes you're, you're even able to make it a little bit smaller, but we'll provide... Sometimes, sometimes you're you're even able to make it a little bit smaller, but we'll provide that information as soon as we have it.
Okay, when when do you think that'll be done?
As soon as possible, we'll coordinate with the owner.
Mr. Marata, we would
Do that as part of the building permit process, or is that something that's going to be done and presented to the board?
I'll speak to that. Since there was no engineering report per se to address, we would assume and we would ask that it be a condition of approval, that that would have to be done to your satisfaction before any building permits could be issued.
Tom, my only concern is based on the testimony. It was basically when the machine gets on site, which means starting of construction. The, that would be past our approval and and possibly past the conditional space because they're already start working.
Well, again, until the question was raised, but I I'm sure we can figure out a timeline so that it's done before, you know, we start putting, I guess, you know, backhoes to to build. If that's, if the if the borough's concern is, we don't want this to be done when we start construction, I certainly understand that. And Mr. Walker's indicated, you know, he can work with CME to provide whatever they would need before, you know, any building or the process were to begin.
Okay, I just want to make it clear that the, on on this type of application, it wasn't required that an engineering report be provided.
No, I I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that at all.
Oh, I understand. I'm just saying for the audience and everybody and for my board, you know, it's not that CME didn't do it, it's it's not required, it's not something that they were supposed to do. However, they are our engineer and they see it on the plan. And whether or not, I believe if I'm correct, whether it perks appropriately or not, whether or not the dry well will be affected. So that's, you know.
And I certainly understand his concern and we would work with CME to provide whatever information and documentation they need so that they're comfortable with it also.
How would, how would you want that condition to be required?
Yeah, I think prior to the issuance of the building permit, the soil test would be done and the design of the dry well would be submitted for review.
Absolutely. We would have no problem with that.
And the grading plan, please.
Certainly.
I I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can I be heard? I'm not sure if I'm on mute or not.
No, you can speak, Elizabeth.
Thank you. So I I'm just curious as to why the zoning permit was denied last year.
I could either address that or or Mr. Marata, because of the bulk standards not having been met, as we've outlined, that requires the zoning board to grant the relief. The zoning officer can't do that. It has to go before the board so that the board can hear the testimony, hear the application and grant the variances if they believe it's appropriate.
Oh, so it had not gone before the zoning board last year?
No, no, this this matter has just been kind of hanging around and and we're the first virtual one, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is the first hearing that this application has had.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, Liz, hi, this is Dave. I was gonna ask that because we see there was a zoning permit denial dated April thirteen, twenty twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
That was our question.
Sure, it it's just been in the pipeline, I guess, since then.
I do have a question. There seems to be existing fencing along the side in the rear of the property. Is this the applicant's or is this associated with the other properties?
I can certainly address that. I was gonna have a witness do that later, but it's not our fencing. It's the neighbor to the, looking to the left, which I believe is either twenty three or twenty one Ackerman.
And without, and would that affect the distance between the two houses?
I I think Mr. Barry pointed it out to to try and ascertain if it was on the applicant's property, what was the applicant planning on doing with it? And, you know, I can provide testimony, but as a practical matter, it's not our fence. So it it doesn't have any impact other than I think Mr. Barry asked, he wanted to know one way or the other.
That's correct, Mr. Barlow, John Barry. I I just, when we see fences on plans, want to know what's what's happening with them. Sometimes they come down, new fences go in their place or they come down and are not replaced. I think Mr. Barlow's representation that it is not his client's fence sort of answers it for the for the board this evening, as far as I'm concerned.
Was, I have a quick question. Was there ever an a a proposal for a
Identify for me who's speaking.
I'm sorry, this is Randy Ruth.
Thanks, Randy.
Yeah, was there ever a twelve hundred and eighty two square foot proposal that would have met the criteria of the zoning? Was that ever considered? Or was it only a roughly sixteen or seventeen hundred square foot home?
In order to meet the the Falcos' needs, this was the proposal that was drafted by their architect.
Thank you.
This is Anthony Skelsa. I have a question. Can you hear me? Okay, page four of John's memorandum. We haven't addressed number six. I know minor as it may seem. There's nothing on the plans having to do with mechanical equipment. John raised a question as to whether or not there would be mechanical equipment with concrete cord. Therefore, it could be added to the impervious coverage.
I I prom- I promise I plan on addressing every single item raised in Mr. Barry's report. I was just trying to do it with the the witness who had the most knowledge to it. So I was going to address that with the builder. You want to proceed, Mr. Barlow? Just as a practical matter, I will, hopefully by the end of my presentation, address all of Mr. Barry's questions or concerns or attempt to address them to the best of my ability. And if I leave anything out, I will be happy to try and address them. Why don't you proceed then? Okay, I would call Robert Lombardi, the applicant's architect. Ms. Lombardi, just you're gonna need to be sworn in.
Hi, this is Robert Lombardi. Can you hear me?
Can you please raise your right hand? Can you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Ms. Lombardi, if you can give us your professional address for the record.
My office address?
Yes, sir.
I just moved last week, let's see, four oh nine Point, Richmond Avenue, Point Pleasant Beach, New Jersey. Oh, eight, seven, four, two.
Can you please give the board the benefit of your educational background?
So I have a master's of architecture degree from Catholic University of America in Washington DC. I've been a licensed architect since two thousand thirteen in the state of New Jersey as well as Pennsylvania. I've testified before planning boards and zoning boards, Belmar, Lake Como, Red Bank, Point Pleasant, Point Pleasant Beach, Brick Township, several others.
And have your credentials as a professional architect always been accepted by the land use boards?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Marata, I would ask that, or Mr. Chairman, that the board recognize Mr. Lombardi as an expert in architecture? Please proceed. Okay, thank you. You were retained by the DeFalcos to design a single family house for them at twenty five Ackerman Avenue, correct?
Yes, correct.
And were there any specific requests they had with regards to floors, design, you know, things of that nature?
First and foremost, their number one desire was to have a one level living space. I guess with concerns with aging and possible health concerns. They just desired not to have to have living space on more than one floor. So, you know, I had to fit all the living space on the on the first floor.
And obviously, one of the questions that was raised in Mr. Barry's report is, I guess you could have made the house not as wide and gone up, but that would have defeated the the request of the DeFalcos, correct?
Yes, and as as their architect, you know, it's my job to meet their desires for their house and that was their number one concern.
Okay, and and as the the house that's currently designed is approximately twenty six feet wide only?
Yes, so it's 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 as narrow as possible to get a garage on one side, a hallway in the center, and a bedroom on the other side. And there's not a lot of extra space. They're about as tight as I could possibly get it.
Now, you repair, prepared some renderings and e- elevations to assist the the board this evening, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna share my screen. And if we can mark this as A3, Mr. Marata. And Ms. Lombardi, can you just briefly tell us what this rendering is?
You know, it's a, this is a pretty small house. It's it's a colonial ranch style home. A traditional look, three bedroom, two bath, with a full basement, which will primarily be just be used for storage. It's not part of the living space of the house. And this is just the front elevation. The sides can be seen on the architectural plans, the other drawings.
Okay, and again, this is a one car garage that's proposed?
Yes, one car garage. So there's room for parking in front of the garage as well as one car inside the garage.
I'm gonna bring up, if we can mark this as A flo- A four, excuse me, which is the first floor plan and the foundation plan, correct?
Yes, correct.
And this was prepared by you?
Yes.
And if you could just go over the first floor plan for the, with the board?
So the drawing on the right is the first floor plan. That's the living space of the home. There's this entry stairs, a small, a small entry porch, a center hall, and you can see that the two smaller bedrooms are located to the right of the center hall. The hallway bathroom is just, is next to the garage and laundry room. You can see the main living spaces on the right rear side, which is the kitchen, dining room, living room, all in one open floor plan. Stairs to the basement on the left side, and then you have the master suite in the rear left corner, which is the master bedroom and the master bath. And then there's a a rear, a rear, a small rear rear porch with rear stairs that go down to the patio.
And
For us to point out the different sites that you're referring to.
You're talking about up in the top of the picture is the backyard or back, correct?
Yes.
And then you have the master bedroom on the left at the back of the home, the living room and the dining room are all kind of in the back of the house, correct?
Yes.
And again, because of the narrow, narrowness of the proposal, it's basically one room on either side of a hallway is about the best you could fit, correct?
Yes. And you were really, we're really locked in by the the size of the garage width. You really can't go less than twelve feet to have a functioning garage, and you can't go less than four feet for a hallway. So, and the bedrooms are not oversized by any means on on the right front of the house.
And again, the only way to really reduce the footprint then is you'd have to put a second floor on the house, correct?
Yes.
Now, a question was raised and I just want to clarify something. Mr. Walker had shown on the plan that there was sixteen ninety five in square foot. If I'll, and hold on a second, I can bring that back up. Is that calculation correct of the sixteen ninety five or is it actually slightly smaller?
Sixteen ninety five. I I measured it at sixteen forty six, but we do have the same file that we use for our footprint. So it could be that I didn't include the exterior width of the walls. If there's a, if there's a discrepancy, a lot of times when calculating living space, architects don't go to the outside edge of the wall, we only go to the inside. You know, because that's the actual space that's living. So that could be the discrepancy.
Okay, because I I think what the the board member was questioning is if you add thirteen sixty four and you add two eighty, I get sixteen forty four. The site plan says sixteen ninety five, so there's a fifty square foot difference. And you believe it just has to do with calculating from the exterior walls or the interior walls?
Yes. And the dimensions should be the same on both of our drawings so that the building will be the size that's shown on both the drawings. You know, the width and the depth. So, and I believe that's consistent on both.
And as A five, I've just brought up the rear and left elevator, correct? And you prepared these?
Oh, yes.
Okay, anything that you need to address with the board as to the rear or left elevation is just a standard design for a single family home?
Yeah, same style, colonial ranch style, pretty simple.
And then as A six, you have the front elevation again and the right elevation, correct?
Yes.
And on the right elevation, do I take that back? Just why, I just want to go back to one thing. On the rear elevation, this is the stairwell that you could see from the floor plan design, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow, do you have any other witnesses you would like to call? I'm just trying to, is my screen, oh, I gotta stop the share, hold on. That's, I was just looking for the button to stop the share, I'm sorry. I just want to see. Is is there a patio proposed as of now for the rear of the property?
Is this a question for me, Tom?
Yes, yes.
There is, and I'm not sure if that rear patio is is included in the impervious. I I'm not sure what material that's gonna be made of yet, and I'm not sure if pavers count as impervious. So that might be a question for the engineer or the builder.
Um, we counted it as impervious. It could be, you know, pavers are, you know, there's, there's a big debate whether or not, you know, individual pavers are are pervious or impervious, but we counted them as impervious. And it's a twelve by sixteen paper patio.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further for Mr. Lombardi at this time. I was going to call the builder, if that's acceptable.
Mr. Chair, I had a few questions since Jim LeBlanc.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, Ms. Lombardi, the basement height or the height of the basement?
I believe, I believe it's nine feet. Let me, I can check if you give me a minute. I believe it's nine feet.
Okay, and the the attic, I guess at the apex, what the the height of that?
The apex is seven foot seven. So it's not, it's not a full height of room up there.
No, not not at the apex. So access to the attic is, you have what, just a drop down staircase plan?
Yeah, it would just be a pull down staircase.
Okay. Is there, I don't know if you're the one that could tell me if there's any street, if there's an off, if there's a sign out on that portion of the street saying no parking or not. I don't believe there is, but I'm
I wouldn't be the one to ask that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Um, can somebody confirm with me on that side of the street? Are there sidewalks on that side? I know the other side, there's sidewalk. Are there sidewalks on that side of the street?
I I believe that's why we're uh putting them in as per the requirements.
That's what I want to know, if that's gonna be put in, because I didn't see.
Uh, Mr. I think Mr. Walker testified that the plan is we're putting in a sidewalk.
There's a, that's right, there's a sidewalk in front of the 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 house immediately to the east, to the right. Um, looking at it, so they do have a sidewalk, but then past there in either direction, is there a sidewalk? I would imagine that the 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 um, the town's interest would be to to as applications come through, that they would keep continuing on that public sidewalk. So we are proposing that sidewalk.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Want to continue, Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
I have a question. Okay, Mom, will you even have anybody speak to the criteria on the variances?
I I'm going to try and address them um through the testimony and then argue. I I do not have a professional planner as part of this application because of the nature of the bulk variables. It's a it's a single family home.
I believe I believe your your architect might be able to do so.
Okay. Well, tha- that's what I, when I had asked him about attempting to conform it within the limited lot size, I believe um has between Mr. Walker and Mr. Lombardi for a C one, the hardship variance. And also because of the nature of the dilapidated old house that was there, that um, the positive uh criteria met and that there are really no negative criteria to the project. So I believe their testimony along with the other witnesses when taken as a a totality addresses what Mr. Barry uh was raising in terms of uh the concerns and the standards involved.
Uh, well, let's proceed with the other testimony then.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll call Michael Lombardi. If you could raise your right hand, Michael. And Mr. Marata will swear you in.
So I'm trying to find, uh, thank you, okay. Uh, Mr. Lombardi, uh, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Michael, could you give us a professional address and state your name for the record?
Um, my professional address is sixteen sixty-seven Woodland Avenue in Edison, New Jersey. And uh, my name is Michael Lombardi. Um, I am the uh owner of M Lombardi Development. I'm the uh, I operate a real real estate development firm.
And how long have you been in uh development and homes?
Um, I've been in the development of real estate since July of two thousand thirteen.
Okay, and in fact, in this particular application, you have another hat you wear as you are the DeFalcos son-in-law.
That is correct.
So there's no pressure on you?
Yeah, no, none at all.
I just want to ask you a couple of questions about Mr. Barry's report. Uh, you heard it was uh raised earlier. In terms of the fence that's on uh two sides of the property, you've confirmed that that uh fence does not belong to the DeFalcos, correct?
Yeah, that's confirmed.
Okay, and there was a question in Mr. Barry's report as to whether or not uh an air conditioning pad was planned um on for the house, for the air conditioning and any other mechanical equipment. And and if so, the size of it, uh, or is there a a different way you plan on going forward with that?
Yeah, so um, the house will require one air conditioning unit to be installed. Um, I do have flexibility in terms of where I can actually put that. I would ideally like to install it uh either on the uh right rear of the house um or in uh the actual back. And uh, the method of installation for that is I actually prefer to use air braces. So instead of needing a concrete pad or um, you know, actually installing a pad, um, I install an air brace that actually bolts into the foundation and then actually keep the air conditioning unit elevated above grade. I just found over time it, you know, tends to preserve the integrity of the unit uh in a better better fashion.
Um, Mr. Marata, I I don't know if if CME has any uh question with regards to that or um, obviously, we would submit it for their approval beforehand.
No, no comment here.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Mr. Barlow and and Mr. Lombardi, this is John Barry. Um, you're you're right at the the setback lines. I don't, I don't believe the or the the borough ordinance has any provisions about that kind of equipment, but since it is a tight lot, would you be willing to stipulate that it be installed to the rear of the house so that it's a little further away from the neighbors?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
That's no problem uh on my end. I, like I said, I have, I have a, a, you know, the basement is gonna be unfinished, so I do have a little bit more flexibility in terms of where I can install that unit. So if the board would prefer to have it installed in the backyard, that is something that, you know, in terms of an installation standpoint, wouldn't be an issue.
We would certainly accept that as a condition of approval, Mr. Marata or Mr. Barry.
Thank you.
Okay. I think from a from the builder's perspective, that is everything in Mr. Barry's report. Uh, Mr. Marata, just by way of housekeeping, items number seven and eight of Mr. Barry's report, seven deals with the lot consolidation, we would certainly, I I believe it makes sense uh to do a lot consolidation deed. We would um obviously work with the borough's tax assessor for the new lot and block number and submit the proposed deed uh for your repu- approval and the description for CME's approval as to the meets abound. As to number eight, the applicant will of course comply with the borough's fee ordinance as to that. And then um I don't have anything further for Mr. Lombardi. I have just Mr. DeFalcio, who will be very brief. Um, unless the board has any questions for Mr. Lombardi.
Does the board have any questions?
No.
Um, I I would call Mr. DeFalcio as my next witness.
Yes.
William DeFalcio, Mr. DeFalcio?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Could you state your name and spell your uh last, oh, state your name and your address for the record?
William DeFalcio, two Heartlander Street, East Brunswick, New Jersey, oh eight eight one six.
Can you, can you speak up a little, please? We we can't hear you that well.
Then can you repeat the street address for me, Mr. DeFalcio?
Heartlander Street.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeFalcio, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, Mr. DeFalcio, just briefly, um, you've heard a lot of the testimony. So it's your intention to move from East Brunswick to Milltown and and downtowns?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and is that the reason you had Robert Lombardi design a house with one floor? It's so you don't have to deal with stairs?
Yes.
Okay, um, and you and Mrs. DeFalcio plan on um residing in the home, correct? And when you bought the house, it was uh vacant and in very poor condition, correct?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was uninhabitable, uninhabitable.
Okay, and you you went ahead and knocked it down basically for for the safe safety concerns, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have for Mr. DeFalcio, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You have anything else, Mr. Barlow?
Uh, I just, after you opened to the public, I just have a a a brief uh closing statement, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Uh, do you want to open to the public first? That way, if they have any questions, I can address them in my closing.
Okay, before we do that, uh, does the engineer or planner or attorney have anything they want to add?
I'm going to ask if if John doesn't mind if he can opine a little bit on the uh variants.
Sure. So the the applicant, this application is for five C bulk variances. They were, they were testified about by the applicant's engineer, Mr. Walker, in terms of the lot area, the lot width, the lot coverage by building, the impervious lot coverage, and then the distance between the buildings when in consideration of the neighboring properties. The statutory standard for the C variance for the for the board, for the public, um, there there's two options. One, one option is that the application can be granted based on a finding of a hardship associated with the piece of property. So hardship's not uh, not somebody's financial situation, not not something like that, but something having to do with the physical characteristics of the piece of property. In this case, um, there was some conversation about the hardships that that the applicant is facing in trying to develop this property because it is an existing undersized lot in the in the zone. It's surrounded by other developed properties. So um, I don't know if there was explicit testimony, maybe the, maybe Mr. Barlow can um make a statement about this, but um, it does not appear there's any land available for the applicant to acquire, to expand the property, to make it a conforming lot. So they're essentially, they're stuck with with what they have to work with here. So there's nothing they can do about lot area. There's nothing they can do about lot width. Um, which brings us to the lot coverage by building and the impervious lot coverage. You heard testimony about the design decisions that went into the project and why the applicant's chosen to approach it this way. The, I think um there's certainly been compelling argument about why the applicant would want the house to be a single story house as opposed to two stories, which was one of the alternatives that that I suggested. It does advance the the purposes of zoning in the municipal land use law to provide for a variety of housing types and to provide for places for for people to live as they age and and are comfortable um aging in place. So that's certainly a worthwhile goal. And um so really to to get a a sixteen hundred square foot house, give or take a a few square feet, is certainly not um an excessive size in the the standard of modern construction. So I don't think, doesn't appear that this is an example of of an applicant really trying to cram an oversized house on an undersized lot. It's more an example of um an applicant working with with what they have. So the board needs to evaluate the the testimony that's been given in the in the context of the characteristics of the property, and then in the context of whether or not the the purposes of zoning can be advanced by the the project and whether or not any detriments are are substantially outweighed by by the benefits. And then the the board has to think about the neighboring properties and the overall area and whether allowing for this house to be built would would have a substantial detriment on on any of those conditions. And we had some stipulations and some testimony about the drainage and what what the applicant will will do regarding a dry well and the grading plan to the to the engineer's satisfaction. So um, hopefully, that's a, that issue is is something that will be addressed to the extent that there is one. Um, so the board needs to weigh any other uh considerations about about impacts that that may arise. That's really the the rundown on the application so far, and I I think uh it would probably serve to open it to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One last thing from an engineering perspective. Typically, with a um, a single family home like this, um, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, they would prepare an as-built plan showing the as-built grading to demonstrate it's been graded in accordance with the approved grading plan. That would also include an as-built of the dry well demonstrated was constructed in accordance with the approved dry well design plan. So we would recommend that also be a condition of any approval issued by the board tonight.
We would absolutely agree to that, sir.
Thank you.
You're in agreement, Mr. Barlow?
Absolutely.
Very good. Any other of our professionals want to weigh in here? Anyone from the board want to weigh in?
No.
Okay, we're gonna open this up to the public. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the board's attention their concerns or comments. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. If a member of the public has questions, they seek answers to, an appointment can be made at appropriate office uh during regular business hours or with a member of the board during proper office meeting hours.
Yes.
If you'd like to talk uh to to speak, please state your name and address for the record when you when you are acknowledged to speak.
Um, right now, I'm going to ask that uh be reminded that as we enter the public session, that when you're not speaking, please keep yourself muted. And I will acknowledge, if you can raise your hand on your computer, I presently can see one person who I am going to uh ask to speak, but I just want to remind everyone with this many people, it's very hard, and we will make every effort to make sure that you're heard. Um, and the person who is raising their hand, um, uh, I believe it's Mr. McBride.
Yes, this is Robert McBride at twenty-seven Ackerman. Thank you for your time. Um, I know that we're not allowed to ask questions at this forum, but I do want to mention that the side of the left-hand side of the house, the fence was mentioned.
Uh, the uh, you can ask questions.
I can, okay. Does the homeowner plan on using the uh PVC fence on the right-hand side of the house, of their house?
Michael, do you want to address that?
Uh, yeah, I, um, our initial intention was um, we uh wanted to consult with the neighbor to the left to see if we could, you know, at uh Mr. DeFalcio's expense, replace that portion of the fence. Um, if I uh, I do believe the homeowners uh are uh okay with the white vinyl privacy fence, so ideally, they would like to, you know, keep that and just replace the uh wooden portion, you know, so um, uh, you know, I in short, I believe the answer would be yes, but um, you know, you know, that that would be as of now.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Anyone else?
Give me one second, um. Uh, Michael. And Michael, I never can get your last name right from Environment. I'm going to sarcasm.
Chikartan, yes.
Chikartan, thank you. Could you give me your address as well for the record?
Yes, Michael Chikartan from the Environmental Commission, nineteen Yarnell Avenue in Milltown. Uh, yeah, so just a few questions and comments. Um, you know, from the environmental perspective, of course, but you know, we're we're concerned with regard to this property with impervious surface, you know, it's um goes without saying that the Environmental Commission would be concerned about that. And um, so it it looks like, you know, it's not that much of a difference, but it looks like we're talking about a building lot coverage of, you know, like thirty-three percent is compared to the thirty-two point one um listed here. So, you know, that's is compared to the twenty-five percent, which is the allowable. Uh, so we do have uh some concern about that, and and we're pleased to see that um uh that there are plans for a dry well. One, one question I would have with regard to the, with regard to the property, and I'm I'm not sure whether this was answered. One, one question I would have with regard to the, with regard to the property, and I'm, I'm not sure whether this was answered or partially answered, but was there, you know, was there, um, any examination of the soils done? And, and, and if so, what was found? Are these well-drained soils or, um, you know, what is, do we have any information on that?
Um, I'll, I'll speak, I think, um, as a discussion between Mr. Walker and, and the borough's engineer, it was agreed that that information would be provided to CME for their review before any building permits or anything were issued. Is that correct, Mr. Walker?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and so we, you know, and so it's, I think it's, it's great that a sidewalk is going to be added there. Um, uh, personally, but we, we do know that that, um, you know, that's going to be adding to the impervious surface. So was that included in the total, um, total impervious surface added?
No, that is, that, that's a public feature, so that's not part of the actual, the lot calculation.
Okay. And, and, and do we know how much impervious surface that is?
The lot is almost just under, the, the lot frontage is just under fifty feet wide. It's a four-foot sidewalk. Take away the driveway, so you're looking at, uh, fifty, maybe a hundred and fifty square feet of sidewalk. It's a small number.
Hundred fifty square feet. Okay, thank you. Um, and, and with regard to, um, let's see, so what was that other thing I had here? Yeah, so with regard to the house, we're talking about, I know, uh, Mr. Barry called it a one-and-a-half-story house. But, um, it's being described as a colonial ranch, and I think from the discussion, it sounded more like it was a one-story house. So, s- so, so what is in actuality? There's, uh, my guess is that there's, there's, it's not, it, there's no ability to put, um, any rooms up in the attic area.
Mr. Barry, is, is that for me or for you? I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, I didn't design the house, but I, I think it was, um, it, the, uh, it may have been referring to the attic space, if, to the extent that there is any. And I think the testimony has been pretty clear that there's no habitable area, um, above the living, the main living floor and that there's an unfinished basement, uh, you know, Mr. Barlow and his experts can expand on that as they like.
That was the testimony. It's an unfinished basement and the, the attic, I think it was testified to at the peak is seven feet, three inches. So there's no, and it, I'm not sure why it was described as one and a half. It, it, maybe that's why, but it's a one, as the architectural plan showed, everything is on one floor.
Thank you.
The half the story usually refers to, um, uh, the area inside of a roof. It's like an unfinished roof.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm, when I think of a cape, I think of a cape as a one-and-a-half story, but maybe I'm incorrect.
It's a one-story livable.
One-story livable. Thank you. All right, so I, I don't have any other comments other than, uh, the one concern that we might want to just throw out there is, um, with regard to the, um, level of impervious surface and lot coverage, um, on a property in the R eight zone and whether that may set a precedent. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So John, how would we remedy th- those concerns of, of the last, uh, resident? Is there a way to remedy that or no?
Uh, well, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, it, that's part of the weighing that the board has to do here. The, the applicant, the amount of coverage that the applicant's proposing, if it were on a conforming-sized lot, would be below the, the threshold that's permitted. So the excess is being driven more by the size of the property in which they can't do anything about than it is by the extent of the improvements that they're proposing in, as part of the, so part of the weighing you need to do. As far as the impervious coverage goes, Mr. Walker, did the, did the patio factor into your impervious calculations?
Did, yes, that's correct.
Did, so, um, you know, one, one thing that, and I know that, um, members of the Environmental Commission in the past have, have mentioned permeable pavers as a, a desirable solution. Um, if a, a permeable paver system could be used for the back patio, that would reduce the, that, that would reduce some of the impact of, of the impervious coverage in that area and bring it closer to conformance. That's something that the board may, may consider asking the applicant if they can do.
Mm-hmm.
That's, other than that, um, without shrinking or eliminating that patio, like I said, in my opinion, that the, the size of the house itself i- is fairly modest and, um, you know, it, it sounds like it's, uh, it's been designed to suit the applicant's needs. I, I don't see it as being excessive despite the, the, the somewhat excessive coverage.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else from the public?
I don't see anyone else wishing to speak.
Okay.
So I believe it's appropriate to ask for a motion to close.
Uh, make the motion.
Second, Jim.
Motion by Mr. Potter, second by Mr. LeBlanc. Public session is now closed.
Mr. Chairman, if, uh, at this juncture, if I could just give a brief, uh, closing statement?
Yes, Mr. Barlow. Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, the, the DeFalcos are simply looking to downsize, which, you know, we all are either in the process of or, or have to look forward to. They had an existing property knocked down because it was an eyesore and in poor condition. They're now before you in order to build a single-family home. As a result of the undersized lot, there's several variances that are needed. As I believe the testimony's indicated, uh, that under the C one hardship standard, because the lot, um, i- is undersized, there's either nothing or the options are limited as to what the applicant can do. Um, it's an undersized lot that has always had a single-family house on it. Mr. Barry noted, is there anything the applicant could do to, to increase the size of the lot? And, and that's just not possible. Uh, Mr. McBride was on one of the adjacent, uh, neighbors. Um, he lives on one side and there's a house on the other side. So there's not vacant lots that can be obtained in order to, uh, correct or, or limit that deficiency. So, um, I believe under the C one hardship, uh, guidelines, the variances as to, uh, area and width can be granted along with the one for the side yard setback to the adjacent property owner. What's can, what's proposed is consistent with the neighborhood and the new housing stock that's proposed is an improvement over what existed. If the board doesn't believe that under the C one hardship, uh, guidelines that the variance could be granted, then certainly under the C two, I believe the testimony has indicated, um, that the relief can be granted uh, for a single-family house in the single-family residential zone. The benefits of a new home clearly outweigh the option of leaving a foreclosed eyesore present for who knows how long. The proposed relief would not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare. In fact, I believe it improves the public safety, health and welfare when one considers the sidewalk going in, which all towns that, older towns struggle with, that houses were built without sidewalks. And as new development happens, you try and, uh, increase sidewalks, um, which are on the applicant and not on the municipality and the taxpayers. The dry well that's being proposed again will, um, address any, uh, water runoff concerns that, um, that anyone may have. Again, an empty, potentially dangerous eyesore is being replaced with new housing stock, which is clearly beneficial and can in no way impair the borough's master plan or zoning ordinances. All in all, what, from what existed at twenty-five Ackerman to what the DeFalcos would like to do within the parameters that they are bound by with an undersized lot, I believe the board can grant the application with the requested variances, of course, subject to, uh, everything that we agreed to as part of our presentation, um, any of the conditions that we agreed to along the way. Thank you very much for hearing our presentation and, uh, I hope your verse, the first Zoom presentation was acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Any board member have any additional comments?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, um, as a part of, uh, the Environmental Commission sitting on the board, um, with the applicant, uh, agree to, uh, Mr. Barry's pavers in the back for the pervious space?
Uh, either to, uh, would it be acceptable if we either agreed to do, um, pervious or, uh, remove it altogether, but certainly, um, take the impervious pavers out of the calculation? That would be acceptable.
That's what I mean. Whatever that Mr. Barry said toward the end with the Environmental Commission has suggested in the past.
That would be acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion.
Yes, the, before you make the motion, I'd just like the board to, uh, uh, discuss the matter as to the variance that has been, question that's been put before the board. Um, and the board has to find whether certain, um, testimony that they heard tonight, uh, meets those variance requirements. Uh, the, I'd like to have some discussion about that prior to just going forward with the vote. The, we've heard the testimony that the, uh, one, one item, the house was moved from the side of the lot to the center of the lot, which is a, uh, a positive, uh, factor. The dry well being put in place to, uh, assist with runoff, in fact, making it better than it was before. Uh, the C one factor that, based on the actual physical condition of the property, they can't do anything to change that. The removing of a, a, an eyesore at the, at the location. So with those factors in mind, it has to be a finding that the board, uh, finds it meets the, um, criteria. So if the board can discuss that and make any comments about it, I would appreciate that.
Neil, I'll make a comment. Uh, yeah, I, overall, I do see more positive impact, uh, for this plan, uh, for the neighborhood. Um, and being the existing conditions of the size of the lot, I see the variance as not being any, much of a detriment at all. So I think it's a, acceptable in my mind. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Carasso.
Hi, this is Randy. Yes, this is Randy Ruth. I just wanted to point out that, uh, the maximum impervious coverage is only two-point-three percent greater, uh, than what's allowed by the, by the code. And, you know, that, that equates to a, a few hundred square feet. You know, it's, it's actually pretty minimal.
Taking the patio out, Randy?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think if you take out a patio, you'd be around forty percent. I mean, the point is, it's, it's really close. And considering everything that's been done or that's been presented, from what I've seen, I think, you know, the difference of a two-hundred square feet i- is, it's, it's, it's rather, it, it's, they, I think they've done a good job trying to address everything. It's just my personal opinion.
I, I, I agree, and I think it will be a positive thing to see this house being built rather than more rubble uh, in town, quite frankly. I, I, I think it will be a plus.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Uh, what strikes me is that the former conditions are, the proposed conditions, the, the former conditions on, on a lot of aspects of this did not, did not comply with the required, uh, uh, dimensions anyway. So I, 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 I mean, I, I, I think, I think this is a good project and, uh, I'd like to, uh, ask for a motion.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Potter, second by Ms. Marquez. Please call the roll.
Mr. Chair?
That motion is to approve the application, correct?
Be- before approving or before voting on it, can we, uh, just clarify that the, the motion to accept is contingent upon the engineering review and approval of, for Mr. Barry to review the dry well and, and so forth, that we discussed?
I'll, I'll state the, I'll state the conditions. Tom, if you'd want, uh, some assistance on that. The, um, also, Tom, did you move your evidence, your items into evidence?
Um, i- if that's what, uh, this board, uh, does, I, I've never had to move anything into evidence before, but I certainly would move them into evidence if that's the board's, uh, protocols. So that's part of the record.
Thank you.
And do we have to state it's based on hardship? Does that have to be stated at all?
I, I didn't hear somebody make a finding on hardship. I, I think that the
Well, it's, it's what John said, John Barry.
Say again?
Mr. Barry had addressed that earlier.
Yes, I don't know if any of the board members had a finding on hardship. They definitely did with regards to, uh, C two variants. Um, do you have a comment you would like to make on that list?
No, no, I was just wondering if that had to be part of our motion.
Um, not part of our motion is the, is the discussion that went forward during this process and the comments by the board that I would be relying upon. So if you do find that there was also a hardship, then I would put that into the, the record. Or if you find that there is not, that would be commented upon as well.
Well, I, I would just go with, uh, Mr. Barry's guidance on that.
Okay, I believe that Mr. Barry did state that there was hardship involved with it, so.
And, you know, I'll, I'll confirm that I, I think that there are, um, some very strong hardship arguments for most, if not all, of the variances, but the, the testimony supports both C one and C two arguments and the board members have, I think, found as such.
Okay, um, the, just going as to the conditions, the, the primary condition was discussed was the dry well, um, that there will be, is it a part test or, or soil testing that will be done to make sure that the dry well will be affected prior to construction and as approved by CME engineering? Prior to building permit, yes.
Okay.
And, uh, there's also a condition that the air conditioning unit will be in the rear yard. Further, that there will be a, a pervious patio put in place. Or none at all, okay? Uh, also that, uh, the applicant will provide an as-built plan prior to CO, uh, and that's all I have. Anything else, Tom?
I, I think you hit the, the, the major ones, obviously. I don't think, I, I think that was all of them, obviously, if we agreed to it on the record. Um, you know, w- we're bound by that, um, but those are the, I think you hit the, the high notes.
Oh, I'm sorry, just the lot consolidation.
Yes, and the lot consolidation, we agreed to that, yep.
And, and the proposed grading plan.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the last, the proposed grading plan. Yeah, yes.
Yes. Okay. There's a motion on the floor?
Okay, so we so based upon those conditions, we have a motion by Mr. Potter, seconded by Ms. Marquez. Please call the roll.
And I just want to confirm with you, Neil, that the mayor and the class one councilman Farkas will be allowed to vote on this first application, correct?
That is correct, thank you.
Okay. Mayor, mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Farkas?
Aye.
Mr. LeBron?
Aye, I think this is an improvement, what was there and what, uh, and, and what's going to be there is going to be certainly much better, uh, yes.
Mr. Carasso. Ms. Marquez.
Aye, and welcome to the new residence.
Mr. Lozinski.
Aye.
The May Corps.
Aye.
And Chairman Patanza.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the application subject to the conditions stated.
Thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening, stay safe.
Thank you, welcome, you're welcome, Milltown, Mr. DeFalco, Mr. DeFalco, welcome.
All right, Mr. DeFalco, you got all your new friends.
Be over for the barbecue.
Just bring a beer, I'm sure he'll be welcoming. Thank you.
Night, Tom.
Good night, Neil.
Next on the agenda.
Let's give everybody one minute to sign off if they're leaving from. The first applicant and then I'm just going to double check because I believe we've had some additionals sign in and I just want to give them an opportunity to. And I will remind everyone again. You've all been incredibly respectful, we do have a large group, it's been great, keep it down, keep yourself muted. Again, we'll have another. Public session. At that time, you'll, you saw how it worked the first time, it will work that same way, everybody gets a chance to speak, so. I'll turn it back to the chairman.
Okay, next on the agenda is the second public hearing. This is application PB02-2020. Green space self-storage. 142-158 Riders Lane, lot 85, lots 6.01. 7, 8, 9, and 9.01. Applicant is seeking a bifurcate. Bifurcate, has it pronounced?
Bifurcated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Use variance approval in zones B4 and R10 to build an indoor storage facility.
And I'll take this opportunity to note for the record that the applicant has paid all the fees to date and the public notices for the 200-foot list. And the newspaper advertisement were completed timely and are in order and have been delivered here to the secretary at the Borough Building.
The applicant representatives here.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lawrence Sacks on behalf of the applicant, green space self-storage. Mr. Chairman, as you stated in the notice, this is property located. At 142-158 Riders Lane. It's in block 85, it comprises lots 6.01, 7, 8, 9, and 9.03. The property is located in two zones, it's actually located in the B4. Highway commercial zone and also in the R10 residential zone, so it's a split-zone property. Just as a point of reference, this is an assemblage of several lots. That run from the Rita's or the old Rita's on Blueberry Drive. Down to the, down to Pasquale's Shopping Center over by Washington. It's, there's, there are, Rita's Isis is still on, is still a standing building. Although it, it has been closed and there's several, what I would call dilapidated residential dwellings that front on Riders Lane. The property, the size of the property is approximately 3.416 acres. And what we're here this evening for is to seek a use variance, along with several bulk variances. To construct a Class A self-storage facility with a footprint of approximately 45,755 square feet. There will be three floors to this building. So in addition to seeking the D1 use variance, because this is not a use permitted in that zone. We're also seeking bulk variances or C variances for height. Interestingly, the maximum height in the residential zone is actually 35 feet, the building's only going to be 30 feet. In height, however, your ordinance only limits the number of stories to two and a half in that zone, this will be three stories. But it'll actually be five feet lower than what's permitted in that zone. And there were also some bulk variances for lot coverage and for impervious coverage. I have several witnesses who will be testifying. I'm not sure we'll get through all of them this evening, but as a matter of introduction, there'll be Mr. Rick Stockton. Who's one of the principals of, of green space self-storage. I have Mark Lieber, who's a professional engineer, who will discuss the site engineering. I have an architect, Leanne Andristo, who will describe the, the aesthetic and architectural elements and treatments on the building. Our traffic engineer is Michael Drovny. And we have a professional planner, John McDonough, who will also be testifying. So, Mr. Chairman, without further ado, my first witness is going to be Mr. Rick Stockton. And I think he's going to give you some interesting information about their business and. And how they actually build these, this, this type of self-storage facility.
Excuse me, Larry, I, I just want to address the one item that I had brought up to you concerning the actual application itself. Yeah, and I, I believe you said that the property owner is here tonight?
Yeah, the property owner is here, I believe there may have been an error in the application. Stating versus the owner versus the applicant. The owner is AVN or some iteration of that entity, they are here this evening. They obviously have consented to this proceeding forward and the actual applicant is green space self-storage. They are a contract purchaser of this particular site in contingent upon getting the approval. But certainly, certainly we can have the app, the owner of the property indicate that they consented to the application if that's necessary, Mr. Marata.
If they can do that. Verbal consent and then prior to any approval, an amended application setting for the affidavit.
We can do that, that's fine. And one other thing also, let me, I know, Mr. Chairman, you, you referenced the bifurcated nature of this application. And I know you've got a combined planning and zoning board now, so let me. This is one of the quirks that you sometimes see in front of zoning boards. So my client is only seeking the, the use variance relief and the bulk variance relief associated with that this evening. They're not seeking site plan approval at this time. So if in fact, the board is inclined to grant the use variance relief. For this application, we will then be filing a separate application for site plan approval. So that's why it's called a bifurcated application, so I just want to. Okay, thank you.
If you can have the property owner just give that verbal authorization.
If, if the property owner can log in, I know he's there.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, sir, we have your consent to proceed forward this evening with this application?
Yes, you do, Mr. Sacks.
Thank you, okay. Thank you, Ms. Marata. All right, Mr. Chairman, I guess my first witness then will be Mr. Rick Stockton.
Please proceed.
I'm here, I'm here, thank you, Larry.
Yes, Mr. Stockton, please raise your right hand. Do you sound firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Stockton, you are a principal of, of green space self-storage?
That's right.
Okay, and if you can give the board the benefit of the history and background of green space self-storage?
Sure. We're a five-year-old company. My business partner and I started this in April of 2016. We're a self-storage developer. So we've built two stores today. We're constructing two more now, the first two stores are in the Houston area. The third store is in the Houston area, the fourth store is in Baltimore County, Maryland, White Marsh. We own three more pieces of property, which are about, we're permitting now. So we'll build on those, we'll start construction this year on those facilities. We have, we patented some technology. We have two US patents and foreign patents pending to build self-storage in the manner that I'm about to describe. We use, we upcycle. Intermodal shipping containers. So we stack them in a proprietary method. To create a self-storage facility, which is then clad with. CMU or IMPs or EFAS or stone or glass, whatever the, whatever you like. And then we put a foam or metal roof on top. And we create what is considered a Class A self-storage facility. It's fully climate-controlled. There are no exterior units, storage units on the outside of the building. So you enter the building, it's all climate-controlled, it's all secure, there's cameras, there's keypads. Two elevators, two stairs, thousand-square-foot, 20-foot-tall lobby, multiple offices and break rooms and. And, and the like. So over a 10-month period, we construct a facility which is Class A. We really like Milltown, we like the area, the area is undersupplied for self-storage. We compare it to the national average. Right now, there's 2.99 square feet of storage in the area, three-mile radius. The national average is seven and a half square feet. Whenever we finish building this store, we'll have, have 3.85 square feet in the three-mile radius, so. We're, we're getting the, the area more, more of an equilibrium compared to the United States. So that's a general broad brush stroke of what we do and, and what we're doing.
Okay, and Rick, I know if you can screen share maybe, I know you have some examples of some of the other. Buildings that are either under construction or have been built in Texas or down in Maryland. If you can do that for us.
So.
And let's, before you do that, let's, let's mark this as, Neil, we'll have to mark this as A1. This was not, not something that was provided previously.
Can everyone see the red building on screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a, this is a store we built in Houston. This is a really large store, it's 180,000 gross square feet. This facility has a gate around the facility, a fence, because we have. Units available to, for access from the outside, we're not doing that anymore. So you won't see the roll-up doors on the outside here, you won't see the gate. We put glass on the building and, as you can see here, insulated metal panels. Larry, I'd like to show another.
Sure.
Another picture here, bear with me a second. This is a store. That's built in a suburb of Houston named Pearland. This is a slightly smaller store than the first one you saw. It's 135,000 gross square feet, which is about the same size store that we would build in Milltown.
Ms. Marata, let's mark, let's mark this one A2, Ms. Marata, if you don't mind, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Stockton, go ahead.
That's okay. This too is a three-story tall facility, 29-foot eve height. Lots of glass, you know, it looks like a, it could be an office building, not so much a self-storage facility. So, once we finish building the facility, it, it looks really nice.
And that, and that, that actually is, is very similar in size to the building that you're proposing here, is that correct?
That's right, that's right.
Okay. And is there, are there any other, any other renderings that you wanted to show, Mr. Stockton?
Sure.
Yeah, White Marsh, Maryland, I think, yeah.
I might have White Marsh handy. Yes, I do, I do.
And Mr. Stockton, if I might ask, I can provide through Mr. Sacks my email address, but if you could send me PDS of those for the file, that would be great.
Sure. Yeah. I don't see the White Marsh store. Here at Larry's, so.
That's okay, that's all right, all right, that's okay.
So we're, we're in the middle of construction on two stores, one in Pearland, one in White Marsh, and we're, we're. Four months away from opening, so give you an idea of what we're doing. We're building, we're building 50 stores across America for one investor, and these are build-and-hold stores. We don't build and sell, we build and hold to create annuities. And we hire, we hire third-party management companies, KeepSmart, Life Storage, Extra Space, those kind of guys, to manage and maintain the facility.
All right, let's go, let's talk a little bit about the, the hours of operation, so what would the proposed hours of operation be for this site in Milltown?
Yeah, so that's, that's determined by the REITs, the extras cubes and lives. You can access your, you, you can gain access to the building. From. From 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. If you're a customer, if you're a customer, you run a unit, you can push your keypad number into the keypad and into the building. Those hours, seven days a week, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The office, the office is open slightly different hours. 9:30 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Saturday from 8:30 to 5:00 and Sunday 11:00 to 3:00. And that's, that's typical for the industry.
All right, and what kind of security measures will be in place for this facility?
Right, we've got. Loads of high-definition security cameras on the outside. And in all the halls and all the entrances, inside and out, at the elevators. We record, I believe, a week's worth of video in case there's ever any question about. Break-ins or whatever the case may be for record purposes.
All right, and how many employees will, will you have at this particular site?
There's usually one employee at the site, sometimes there's two if a regional manager comes and spends a half a day with the, with the manager.
All right, and in terms of loading and unloading, and I know that we, we are going to provide some designated loading and unloading areas. But can you describe to the board what would happen if somebody obviously needs to unload a vehicle and, and fill up one of these. One of these containers and one of these self-storages?
Yeah, so we have designated loading zones on the outside of the building. Typically, they're 10 or 12 feet wide and 30 or 40 feet long. A couple of them close to the entrance to the building. And so you can park in the loading zone and into the building and put your goods in the elevator. Or on a car to take them to wherever they need to go, so. That's what we do.
Okay, and the types of vehicles that would be permitted in site, can you describe what types of vehicles would generally be traversing the site?
Right, just to preface to that, we do not rent trucks, we don't have any trucks for rent, so we're not going to rent any trucks. The typical customer drives up in a car or a pickup. They may be pulling a trailer. Oftentimes, you see a U-Haul-type or a Ryder-type truck, that's a box truck. Those are the type trucks that come into the, onto the property, drive around the fire lane, find the loading zone. Unload their goods or load their goods, whatever the case may be. This is not a site that welcomes semi-trucks, 18-wheelers, this is not a distribution facility. This is a personal self-storage facility.
Okay, and I'm assuming you have a, a standard lease that would, that would set forth those restrictions as well, am I correct?
That's right, that's, and that's, the REIT is the, the originator of the lease.
Okay.
Of the author.
Now, in terms of the size of these storage containers. What, what do they generally range from?
Yeah. It's a trick question, so we build using 40-foot-long, eight-feet-wide, nine-and-a-half-foot-tall containers, but we break them up into smaller. Rentable units and we break them up into 25-square-foot units. 50, 75, 100, 150, 200, 250, and 300-square-foot units. And those unit sizes. And the number of units that we put into the building is driven by the, the REIT that operates our facilities. We ask them, what does this area need, they tell us, and we build to that, to that need.
Okay. Now, in terms of parking, I know we proposed, I think, 17 parking spaces here. And obviously, you've had experience in building these other facilities in Texas and in Maryland and elsewhere. Generally, how many parking spaces are, are really necessary for this type of, for this? Generally, how many parking spaces are, are really necessary for this type of, for this type of use?
Right.
Based on your experience?
Yeah, self-storage is a low-traffic generator. We rent 30 units a month. When you think about it, that's not a lot of units that we rent per month, but that's the ramp-up rate in self-storage. And that's what we're seeing on our two operating stores. So, the traffic generated is typically, for parking, parking requirements, less than 20 spots is what we don't think we've ever built, more than 20 spots on a, on a particular site. You'll never see those 20 parking spots full. So, it's something less than 20, Larry.
Okay. Now, in terms of, there was a comment in, I believe it was in either Mr. Barry's report or in Mr. McClellan's report about reorienting the building to face, have the front face Ryder's Lane. That's something that obviously GreenSpace is willing to do?
Yes, we've already taken action, we've, we're having the, the plan revised. So the building, the building shape and orientation will not change, we'll just move the office in the lobby, the entrance to the building facing Ryder's Lane, so it will face Ryder's Lane.
Okay. And obviously, any, any architectural treatments that can, can make this building much more aesthetically pleasing, I'm sure that you would agree upon.
That's correct, that's right, that's right.
And in terms of sustainability, can you talk about the, the energy sustainability of these types of buildings?
Right. So, because we're using these containers, then they will not eventually be put into a, a smelter to create new steel. So, that fact, plus the fact that we don't have to buy new studs and new metal pans and, and all the things that go into a typical self-storage facility, requires us to use a lot less concrete than what you would typically see on a project. So, the metal savings and the concrete savings adds up to about 660 tons of CO2 emissions that does, that do not get emitted into the environment just during, just as a result of our construction technique. And we save enough electricity to power about 560 homes, average US homes, for one year just because of the construction technique we're using.
Okay. And in terms of, in terms of refuse and recycling, obviously, there's a dumpster proposed on the site. And will that just be reserved for, for obviously the business, is that correct?
Just for the business, that's right.
Okay, so in other words, if I've got, if I'm a, if I've got my, if I'm renting a self-storage facility there, if I want to discard of something, I got to take it with me, I'm not going to be dumping it in the dumpster.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. All right, Mr. Stockton, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Security is very important to us. We, we, we have a lot of cameras on site, so security is very important, like I said. No, no exterior access to the, to self-storage units, you have to go into the building. I guess that's it, that's it for now, Larry, yep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stockton.
You're welcome, thank you.
Chairman, I don't have any further questions of Mr. Stockton, if there's any board questions, I'm sure he'd be willing to answer.
Anyone from the board have a question for Mr. Stockton?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. The, the owner of the property, I don't think we ever got his name.
I think it's AVN, but I think it's an entity, it's an LLC if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Marques.
And who would the principal of that entity be?
So, I'm one of the owners, ma'am.
Of, of the property?
Yes, so basically, my brother and I own the property 50/50.
Oh, so you own the property as well as the company that's going to develop the property?
No, 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 my fa, my family owns the company that owns the property currently.
What, your company owns the company that owns the property?
Right, so the, so the owner of the property is AVN Holding LLC, and I'm one of the owners of the company.
Yeah, GreenSpace Holdings is only the prospective contract purchaser of this property. They don't own the property yet, obviously.
But in essence, they're one in the same, is that right?
No, no, they're not one in the same, there's, AVN Holdings is the property owner. And GreenSpace, GreenSpace Self-Storage is a contract purchaser of this property. And that, that purchase is contingent upon getting this approval. So if the approval is granted, then they will, they will acquire the property.
That's right.
But I, I thought it was just said, and I'm sorry if, if I missed it, I, I thought it was just said that GreenSpace owned AVN.
No.
No.
No, GreenSpace does not own.
Okay, so then who owns AVN?
My name is.
Go ahead, sir.
Yep, sorry, so my, my name is Adithya, last name is Pathina.
Oh, I didn't see your face, I thought, I thought it was Mr. Stockton.
Oh, no, no, no.
Sorry, I, I didn't see your face, I didn't make the connection. I, I'm sorry, sir, what is your name?
First name is Adithya, A-D-I-T-H-Y-A, last name is Pathina, B-A-T-H-E-N-A.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have a question for Mr. Stockton?
Yeah, hi, this is Dave Potter, I have a question regarding the hours of operation. 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, what, what's the current noise ordinance hours?
10:00 PM.
Does anybody know, or can anybody find out? Because I'm thinking 6:00 AM to get in and moving stuff into a storage facility is very early, especially being very close to a residential area. And then also to 10:00 PM, you indicated that they can punch the keypad and go into the area after 10:00 PM?
No, no, at 10:00 PM, we're, we're locked hard, you can't, you can put your key, you can put your, your number in the keypad, but it won't affect anything, you can't get in.
All right, how about if you're already in and it's way past 10:00 PM? And there's no security there because your security people leave at about 8:00 o'clock? Who's, you know, if people are still moving in, they could move in till 1:00 in the morning, depending on how much stuff they have. Who's monitoring that?
Yeah, so we have a DVD recorder that records. And so, I could talk to our current operator, KeepSmart, and find out what they do about that particular situation. I don't, I don't know the answer right off, sir.
All right, so you, so currently you have no security other than a camera, other than DVD cameras monitoring the whole building, there's nobody, there's no physical person there as a security person monitoring the area?
That's right, that's right.
Also, another question, I know you, you touched on it really briefly, you, you said, I, I saw the pictures and I saw CubeSmart. And you guys agreed, so could you please explain that whole thing to us?
Sure, so, shall I do that, Larry?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Okay, yeah, so we know how to find sites and design facilities and build them and, and open them up for business. But we don't want to know how to operate the facility. It's, it's not, it's not rocket science, but it's a big headache. And, you know, if we put GreenSpace self-storage on the outside of the building and people went to look for self-storage on their iPhone, or their phone, smartphone, my, my name's not going to pop up, GreenSpace self-storage's not going to pop up. Because the REITs like CubeSmart, they pay, you know, big bucks to get their name in front of, you know, customers. So we depend on them for management of the facility, name recognition, lease-up responsibility, security, security issues that you just raised, they would handle that if there ever became a problem. And yeah, so that, that's how we do that.
Okay, so the name on the building is going to be CubeSmart and not GreenSpace?
We, we don't know who's going to, we don't, we haven't gone into discussions with a REIT about operation of this store. It will be one of the top four, it will be. It will be, it will be Extra Space, Life Storage, KeepSmart, or Public Storage, one of the big four REITs.
And if you do that, you won't know what the, the building's going to look like, obviously. We don't know what the building's going to look like because it depends on who's going to actually own it.
No, we're going to own it, yeah, we're going to own it, it's going to be my store. And, but if it's a KeepSmart store, we may put some, we'll, we'll put the red KeepSmart sign up. If it's an Extra Space store, we'll put the green Extra Space sign up.
Mr. Potter, I can verify for you, I just looked up in our code book. We, we measure our noise ordinance by decibels and, but the restrictions tend to run from 10:00 AM to, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
So, you may want to consider the hours instead of 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, because noise, just with people moving storage stuff, could make a lot of noise.
Duly noted, Mr. Potter. And obviously, we want to comply with whatever local ordinances are in effect.
Larry, Larry, can I add something to that?
Yes.
We, we intentionally want to put, we intentionally want to put the elevators and therefore the loading zones on the north side of the property, which is away from the main residential area that, that we're close to. So, the loading and unloading area will be near the, the retail strip center on the north side of our property.
Right. And actually, Mr. Stockton, let me just ask you one other follow-up question. You said the office is generally open till 10:00 PM?
No, office is open until 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, 5:00 o'clock on Saturday, 3:00 o'clock on Sunday.
Okay, all right.
And just one other question I have, we didn't go into this regarding the lighting, but what's the lighting going to be on the back of the building? Because that's where a lot of the residential homes are going to be.
Right. So, there may be some downlighting, there's, there's not going to be any entrances on the, that side of the building. The entrances, the entrances, entrances for loading and unloading are going to be on the north side of the building. So, we don't really need much, if any, lighting on the west side, south side, and, yeah, on those two sides.
And actually, Mr. Potter, a lot of those issues will be dealt with during the site plan process. We obviously would have to come up with a, a lighting plan. And even still with the architectural, we'll have to come up with the, the final architectural treatments of this building. But I know Mr. Stockton, I think, stated that, you know, whatever additional architectural measures we can, we can employ, we will. And we do have an architect who will be testifying this evening as well, so.
Perfect, the reason why I ask is because you show buildings, that's why, so.
Yeah, Larry, if I can.
Yes.
The, I believe that John mentioned something regarding the lighting and necessity to expand upon that for the purposes of variance, so.
I'll have the, Neil, I'll have my engineer testify to that, he's prepared to testify to that.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board have a question from Mr. Stockton?
Yes, Randy Ruth here.
Go ahead, Randy.
So this seems like an interesting building design, you have a patent for it, that's, you know, that's pretty cool and all, but I'm wondering if there's been any consideration to what happens if, if your business is no longer with us in Milltown for whatever reason? And how, so basically, how adaptive is this type of building construction towards other types of businesses? Like if it was, if it was at a full warehouse, you could subdivide that out and maybe turn it into apartments or mixed-use space or something, but this seems like, you know, you'd have to tear down the building to put something else there in the future. So what's, can you comment on the life cycle of this structure?
I can. So, we intend to leave, leave this building there for, for a long, long time. It's funny that you mentioned the movability of it. The, because we're using containers, we are modularizing the entire facility. So, so, I can modularize one container, is fitted out, already fit out with roll-up doors and lights and sprinkler piping and finished floors and, and the like. And unscrew my IMPs and remove, segregate my foam roof and relocate this facility to another area if I wanted to. I can do that. Now, I, I don't ever want to do that, but if I had to, I could. And re, and reinstall it somewhere else.
Would the structural integrity of the building still be there if you took away all of the self-storage units? So if you got rid of all the units, could, would you just have four walls and a roof?
No, the, the containers are the structure itself. The containers are the structure, and then the exterior cladding and the roof is simply a facade for aesthetic reasons and for insulation.
So would it be safe to say that this building is forever going to be a self-storage unit? And if it's not, then it's, it's going somewhere, well, who cares where it goes? It, it, it won't be there, it'll be some veneer walls essentially left standing.
Yeah, well, we would take the veneer walls with us.
Okay.
You'll have a vacant site in the future if that ever.
That's right, with a, with a nice fire lane for someone to use.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
One other question, I, I'm sorry, one other question I had, those other areas, other storage areas you said that are within the vicinity? Are any of them in a residential zone that you know of?
You said in this vicinity, you mean the other stores I'm building?
That, and also too in this area as well, you said in this area, we're within certain mileage of other storage facilities.
Oh, right, right, so, yeah, so self-storage is a, is a three-mile radius business, so. Yeah, we're, the first two stores we built, they're apartments all around us and townhomes all around us. The store we're building now in the suburb of Houston called, their second store in Pearland, there's two new apartment complexes going up now, multiple complexes around us. So, we're, we love it and, and that's where you want to build, it's where there's, where there are people.
Actually, Mr. Stockton, let me ask a follow-up, is, is that really the business model of, of this industry? That obviously you're serving the individual, you're serving, you know, people who may be between homes or apartments? Is that really what the business model is, is to, to locate as close to residential areas as you can? Obviously recognizing that there are zoning laws in place, but is that more or less the business model?
Yeah, that, that's right, and the closer you can get to retail areas, the better because those are, those are traffic generators and, you know, gets more eyes on your property, so.
Okay.
Anyone else from Mr. Stockton?
Yes, Anthony Skelsa, I have a couple of questions here, Mr. Stockton, how are you, sir?
Fine, thank you, how are you?
Good, thank you. So, a, a couple of things come to mind with me and as I look at the page of plan that was produced for us to get a sense of what you're doing here and how the building's laid out, on page A101, I, I look at the plan view and it seems like there's many, many units. Now, I do know that you stated before that you'd do a study in the area to see what the needs would be, and that would help determine how many square feet each unit would be, so on and so forth.
Right.
But the current proposal, if you look at it, you know, and I, I doubt very highly that you're going to do this, but if you look at what's proposed and you consider it as a three-story building, the way it's proposed, it looks like you'd have somewhere around 840 units with three stores, with three floors. So, I'm wondering if at this point in time, if you don't at least have some kind of an idea of how many units you intend to build in the three stories, you've got a lot of square footage there, and 17 parking spaces doesn't really look like a whole heck of a lot. You take into consideration that if this really takes off the way I'm sure you would like it to, on a Saturday, on a Sunday, on weekends, you've got entrance from Blueberry, you've got entrance from Ryder's Lane. It seems like it could be a traffic quagmire, I don't know, I'm just guessing here. But so, so my real question, number, question number one is, do you have an idea how many units are going to go in those three stories?
Right, so without looking at the document right now, that we're, we're going to be roughly around 1,000 units. And we had, I'm sorry?
Did you say 1,000 units?
1,000 units.
Well, that far exceeds my calculation based on what's here, but please continue.
And we hired a traffic study to be done, and Mr. Sacks should speak to that. But we've done a traffic study of our, our Pearland store that's been operating for two years. We did a traffic study on that, and I forget the exact number, but it's a, it's a very low volume. That building has been open for 22 months and it's 60% full. And I was there today, there were four cars there, and I brought all four cars. There were four cars there, and I brought all four cars. All the, all the parties were with me. I mean, there was nobody there when we drove up, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Skelsa, look, we have a traffic engineer who can testify to the traffic study, but just to enlighten the board, interestingly, the Rita's, you know, that little Rita's icees that was on the corner of Blueberry and Ryder's Lane actually generates more traffic than, than this self-storage facility will generate. I mean, I think th- these are fairly, very low-impact, low-intensity traffic generators. You know, someone may come once every two months to go visit the site. So it's not like someone goes there on a daily basis necessarily, particularly in light of, of what they're seeking to rent to. So, but we have a traffic engineer who can, can answer those questions.
Are there? If there's 1,000 units, but if I may continue, if there's 1,000 units there, and I believe you stated earlier that sometimes you only have 30 units rented per month, so does that mean out of the entire count of all the units there that you might only have 30 units occupied? I don't quite follow.
That's the ramp-up. That's the ramp-up rate. You, you net an increase of about 30 units per month. That's everywhere, just about everywhere in America, that's the ramp-up rate.
Okay. And what's, what's the, on, on average, how long do folks usually rent these units for about?
I think the industry average is nine months.
Nine months?
Well, I, I know, I, I've talked to operators, some people have rented units for 20 years. Some people rent units for a month. I think the average is about nine months.
Okay. And, and I, I noticed in your, in the beginning of your presentation, when you speak about the, the building, you refer to it as a store. So here in the state of Jersey, I can reference, but here in the state of New Jersey, you know, we would consider that a storage facility, and it would be probably a low, a low, an S1-type storage facility. So it really, you know, it's, it, it's not like a mercantile or a store or something like that, that, that nature.
This is an S1 occupancy facility.
It definitely is an S1, okay. And, and I guess I, I just have one more thing. I, I understand your construction method and, and I got some questions about it, but I think it's, it's a great way to, to reuse and, and build in a, you know, in, in a manner that's current with what we're trying to do today, energy-wise, so on and so forth.
Right.
But do you have any anticipation of putting any solar panels on the building?
We honestly haven't thought about it for the store, for this facility. It's not, it's not something we cannot do. We can do it, we just haven't discussed it.
Okay, and, and I don't want to take up too much time, but I have one more question. On the, the large sets of plans that we have, page four of five, around the, the lane, the, the roadway that goes around or the driveway that goes around the building, is there any type of canopy or roof structure that goes anywhere? I, I ask the question only because page four or five from East Point Engineering is considered the grading and utility plan. However, around three sides of the building, I see an area that's kind of like a, it's referred to as a building roof area. And I'm just wondering what that's all about? Am I misinterpreting something in the plan or what is that?
Right. Yeah, if I can, Larry. At one time, we were going to require customers or offer to customers a pull-in area, just to, so, you know, we're three stories tall, so we can leave out two stories, and people can go in and be, it would be covered loading and unloading area. And so we got away from that. The new design, the new approach is not to do that. What we would do now is that fire lane that goes all the way, all the way around the building, where the fire lane gets close to the elevator entrance, we would just put a canopy over that entrance, an awning, if you will, I don't know, eight feet, eight feet wide and whatever it is, 20 feet long and probably 15 feet up in the air, so just so fire trucks can drive under it. But that keeps people out of the weather as well.
Right, but that is something that you don't think you'll be proposing for this particular facility?
Yeah, so we'll put the awnings up, but we won't put, we won't have a drive-in, no drive-in.
So, so you will have awnings around on those three sides that are shown on that page of plan?
Yeah, when I say awning, I mean, it's just a entrance, just a covered, covered area. When you're unloading your goods, you can get, get in and out of the rain.
Okay. And what is that? Something that's supported by cantilevers off of the building or?
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Okay, alright. And let me see, I don't, I, I think that's about it for me. Thank you so much for your time, sorry.
Thanks for the questions.
Anyone else from Mr. Stockton?
Yes, this is Jim LeBlanc. Mr. Stockton, are there industry standards out there for traffic or entering, the number of enterings per, you know, per day?
Right, Mr. Sachs is going to let the traffic expert talk about that.
Okay, but from, from your industry, are there any, I mean, maybe from a traffic study, are they, or maybe the traffic study, they're going to be using those industry numbers for entering and leaving?
Mr. LeBlanc, I think if, in Mr. Miskovich's traffic report, I believe he took the ITE standards for self-storage. Yeah, but he'll testify to that. Yep, thank you.
Anyone else?
That's it.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
So it seems to me that the area, this area in which Milltown exists, is so much smaller than the other places where you have these facilities. But I presume you've done some sort of study to show that you would in fact be able to make this a profitable venture?
Yes, ma'am.
And so of those 1,000 units that you plan, what percentage do you think will be filled within, let's say, a year? Or what would you like to average per year for it to be profitable?
Well, 330, we're going to average 330 leases, lease-ups per year. So it's roughly a third of the facility each year. In the, in the, in the industry.
You mean that would be occupied on, on a yearly basis? It would only be one-third of the building? Or you would add, you would keep adding that until you hit your max?
That's right, keep adding it. So generally speaking, a self-storage facility is considered stabilized occupancy when it reaches 85% physical occupancy. And so I suspect we're going to get 90 or 90, 95% occupied in a three-year period.
Uh, thank you for that information. Also, um, with, and maybe I have to wait for the traffic report on this, but would it be feasible to have entrances and exits limited to Ryder's Lane rather than Blueberry, which is a residential street?
Yeah, I understand the question, and we've, we've discussed that. So that, that's a possibility, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else from Mr. Stockton?
No.
Mr. Sachs, you want to call your next witness?
Yeah, Mimi, if you can, can you?
Chairman, Chairman Pytanza, may I ask one more question, please? I, I'm sorry, I can't take my code enforcement hat off. When I look at the structure, I see where the barrier-free, as we call it here in New Jersey, but the ADA parking space, the one that you're required to put in, which is, will be van-accessible, but based on the plan that I see here, and I know that you said earlier that you were going to move the main entrance to the east side of the building, which is the side that is parallel to Ryder's Lane. I hope I don't lose you, I just got the low battery signal here. Anyway, I, I'll make it quick. So, uh, so that barrier-free spot, now, the way it was oriented originally on the plan, it's on the south side of the building, and it's close to a main entrance, yes, but it's so remote to both of the proposed elevators. So I would just like to throw out there that maybe in your design, you should consider something that affords a closer proximity based on the requirements of the Uniform Construction Code that would get that spot closer to an elevator so that it would be more accommodating for, for those in need.
That's a great idea. We'll, we'll do that. We'll do that.
That's a good point.
Alright, you got it, sir. Thank you, I appreciate that. Just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Next witness, Mr. Sachs.
Yes, Mimi, if you can elevate Mark Lieber as a panelist, for some reason, he got bumped off. I don't know what happened to him.
Wow.
He was texting me, he was actually willing to come over to my house and testify.
Oh, my God, I will, I will find him. Mark, can you raise your hand so I might be able to find you in the list quicker?
Mr. Chairman, I got one question for Mr. Stockton while we're waiting for Mr. Lieber.
Ah, thank you, Mark. Got it.
Go ahead.
Mr. Stockton, have you ever seen a storage unit like this where you actually, the vehicles drive into the building and then park and then go up into their unit? Is that something that you've built or?
Sorry, Mark.
Well, I've seen that, and we've proposed to do that in the past, but we're getting away from that now. So on this store, this would just be a fire lane all the way around the building with some awning-covered entrances, and we'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You know what, Chairman, I do have another question for Mr. Stockton. The, the, can you, can you tell us what the visitation rate is?
What, what the what?
What the visitation rate is? In other words, if you have, if you're at 90% occupancy, you have approximately 800-plus units occupied. How many people visit a, a storage unit a, a day, a week, a month?
Well, that's, that's in the traffic study. You know, it's, 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 I'm guessing now, I think it's five cars a day on average, but the traffic, the traffic study engineer can, can help you with that answer.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if, if there's no other questions for Mr. Stockton, if we can have Mr. Lieber sworn in?
Please. Neil, can you swear in then, please?
Yes. Mr. Lieber? Where are you? Okay, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Lieber, if you can give the board the benefit of your professional background and education?
Yes, thank you, good evening. The Bachelor of Science degree from Trexler University in Civil Engineering. Following school, I went back for a graduate degree. It's MBA from Rutgers Graduate School. I am presently licensed in New Jersey as a professional engineer, a professional planner, and I also have a certified municipal engineering certificate. Been designing various site plans and subdivisions for about 20 years now, and testifying before boards similar to this board, mainly in Middlesex, Monmouth, and Ocean County.
Mr. Marata and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer Mr. Lieber as a expert in professional engineering.
No objection.
Thank you. Okay, Mark, if you can briefly describe the site in question first, and then we can go into what's being proposed here.
Certainly, and I'm going to be having a few exhibits tonight. We can mark them now or as we go, depends on what you would rather do.
Mark, as we go, Mark.
As we go.
Okay. So again, the property here that we're discussing is located at the corner of Ryder's Lane and Blueberry Drive. It is a combination of five tax lots, which are Block 85, lots 6.01, 7, 8, 9, and 9.03. So the combined lot area is 3.416 acres, and the street addresses for these lots go from 142 Ryder's Lane through 158 Rogers Lane. The property has about 350 feet of frontage along Ryder's Lane and 110 feet of frontage on Blueberry Drive. The corner lot, which is 6.01, is presently occupied by the former Rita's Water Ice, and I believe prior to that, it was Cafe Calore, which was a pizza place. On the other lots, there are three vacant dwellings with ancillary detached garage structures. Now, the building on the corner has a driveway onto Ryder's Lane and also a driveway onto Blueberry, but the houses have driveways directly onto Ryder's Lane only. As you heard before, the property is split-zoned. The first 200 feet of this property, parallel to Ryder's, is in the B4 Highway Strip Commercial Zone District, but the remainder of the lot is in the R10 Residential Zone District. So I'm going to share my screen now, I want to bring up an aerial map.
I guess we'll mark this as A3, Mr. Marata?
Okay, so A3 and A4 is going to be a series of photographs right after that.
Okay.
So this is an aerial map which I took off of Google. I have the property outlined in red. You'll see Ryder's Lane is left to right on the bottom, that's a county road, Route 617. You'll see Blueberry Drive directly adjacent to the lot. If you move up on this image, you'll see Leonard Road, which is a dead-end road that ends at the common lot line of this property. And then beyond that, you'll see Peachwood, Applewood, behind the property is Harkins Road, and if you look to the right, which is traveling north, you'll see the intersection with Washington Avenue. Now, the surrounding uses here are a mix of commercial and residential. Directly north of the site is the P&amp;V Plaza, which has two food uses and a salon. And along the southerly lot line, you have both that terminus of Leonard Road and also Blueberry Drive, and both of those streets are residential uses. Now, across Blueberry, you have the existing Wendy's restaurant, and then behind the lot, which is to the west, there are residences along Harkins Road. Another feature is that Ryder's Lane here is the municipal boundary between Milltown and East Brunswick. So across Ryder's Lane, there's actually two residences and a law office, and those are located when, within the East Brunswick OP1 Office Zone District. Now, with respect to topography and drainage, this property is sloped from south to north. The elevation at the southerly side ranges from 84 to 86, and then it slopes down toward the P&amp;V Plaza where the elevations are in the 63 to 67 range. So there's quite a bit of drop across the property. The lot does not contain any freshwater wetlands, it does not have any wetlands buffers, there are no surface waters such as streams, lakes, or ponds, and it's not situated within a regulated flood hazard area. I do want to move on to the photos, which were taken literally the day before the snowstorm. And in the first photo, which I'll call A4 Top Photo, I'm at the intersection of Blueberry and Ryder's, and I'm looking at the former Rita's building. The next photo, I just turned a little to the right so you could see up Ryder's Lane looking north. On the second page, then the top, I'm looking south on Ryder's Lane, you'll see the site is on the right. The next photo is that wooden retaining wall that I'm sure everyone's well familiar with, that's along Ryder's Lane, and this is looking north. I'm on page three, and we have a view from the back of the property. You'll see one of those detached garages and a house in the distance, beyond that house is Ryder's Lane. This photo is looking at the front of that garage. And then the last photo is standing behind one of the houses, just looking into the back of the property where it's an open area.
So just for the record, the, the series of photographs that you provided would constitute A4, Mr. Lieber?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to close that. And I'm going to discuss what's proposed, which I'm going to change to a different screen share. Okay. This is an actual color render. This is an actual color rendering of, uh, sheet five of the plan set that was submitted, which was last revised on December 2nd of 2020.
Uh, let's mark this as A5 since it's a colored rendering.
All right, just bear with me. All right, so what's proposed? The applicant would like to remove all the existing structures on the property to build the, you know, indoor climate controlled, self-storage facility. Now, since self-storage is not permitted in either the B4 or the R10 Zone District, uh, we actually require use variance relief. The footprint of this building is approximately 162 by 282 feet for a total area of 45, 755 square feet. That's the footprint itself. As you heard earlier, the building is a technically a three-story building with about 138,000 square feet, but due to that changing grade on the property that I described before where it falls off as you're heading, uh, to the north, if you were looking at the building from the south, uh, it would only appear as a two-story building. But if you were looking at the building from the north, uh, at the adjacent plaza, you would see all three stories exposed. Now, the overall layout proposes approximately 1,000 units, as you heard previously, and there are no drive-up units. Uh, each of the units is strictly accessible only from an internal hallway. Now, the unit sizes are variable. They go from 25 square feet, which is really a five by five, up to 300 square feet. But I think the average size is about 95 square feet. Um, the entire building will be sprinkled for, uh, fire purposes. Now, in this plan, you could see the main access to the site would be from Ryder's Lane, and we had previously met with the Middlesex County Engineering Department to discuss this entrance, and they agreed to allow access as shown, um, you know, pending a local approval. Now, as part of that regrading of the property, the entire wooden retaining wall along Ryder's Lane is going to be removed. There is a secondary access which is depicted off of Blueberry Drive. It's similar to the location of the existing driver that's there now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So if you were to enter off of Blueberry, there was, um, an area proposed for vehicle parking for customers. Now, once you're on the site, we have a clockwise one-way circulation around the building with a total of 17 parking spaces for customers. The office, although it's presently closed along the southerly wall, uh, as you heard earlier, we're looking at relocating the office to face Ryder's Lane, which would be the east-facing wall. Uh, as far as utilities, I had previously met with the water department down at Borough Hall, and it's actually our understanding that there's presently issues with the quality of the water at the end of Leonard Road, uh, probably due to the fact that that's a dead-end line. So in order to correct that situation, we propose to extend the water main from Leonard through our property and out into Ryder's Lane, therefore eliminating the problem with the water quality that's there now. Uh, in addition, the building will be served by public sewer and there'll be new connections for electric and gas. We did receive an email from the, uh, electric utility supervisor, and he did ask me what the total connected load of the building was. I actually had sent that to him, I believe in October, and, uh, I'm sorry, on December 3rd, and, uh, he responded, "Thank you." So I am not aware of any issues right now with electrical connections. But getting back to water and sewer, we did an analysis of the prior use, which would have been the Rita's Water Ice and three single-family dwellings. Now, according to state requirements for the calculations of water and sewer use, those uses combined would be expected to generate about 1,500 gallons a day. Now, the proposed use, being that it's self-storage and is usually vacant of activity most of the time, uh, would generate a lot less water. We figure other than one employee that may use the restroom every so often, there really is no water consumption, and our calculations estimate that the actual usage would be under 100 gallons per day. Now, just to reiterate some of the things Mr. Stockton mentioned, uh, as a self-storage facility, this site does not receive customer deliveries or drop shipments. Uh, similarly, it's not a shipping pickup location or a distribution center for customers. It's purely self-storage with a small office area for the operator to manage the building. The customers bring their items to the building, whether it's furniture or cartons, in their own cars or rented box trucks such as UAR Penske. And in the building, there are carts available for moving heavy items. These items are always stored by the customer, and there are no trucks available for rent on the property. Now, along the same lines, there are no accommodations for trash of unit owners' items. So it is not the responsibility of the facility to accommodate someone who wants to dispose of their storage items on the property. They have to be disposed of off the site. The only trash and recycling area that's being made available is for the operator himself, and that would include office trash and, you know, recycling, whether it be paper, plastic, or glass. There are some signs proposed. The site sign, which is a freestanding sign, is located about 15 feet back from the Ryder's Lane right away, and that's a 50-square-foot sign. There are also various wall-mounted signs with the name of the facility, which the architect is going to discuss. Moving on to drainage, uh, you know, since it's a bifurcated application, the detailed design calculations that we normally do for drainage are provided in a summary format, more or less to demonstrate that the use could really feasibly be constructed on the property. So our, um, strategy for drainage is that the roof runoff would be taken underground into a series of pipes and storage chambers, which will detain the water temporarily. The paved areas, meaning the drive aisles and the parking, would flow into, uh, more, more or less traditional above-ground detention basin, which would hold back the water and release it over time through a flow control structure. And the ultimate discharge point for all the water is actually the Ryder's Lane storm sewer. Now, the arrangement that we proposed on the plan, which was detailed on sheet four, will significantly reduce the runoff flowing to the north, and it would also be designed in compliance with the New Jersey State Standards for Stormwater Management. Now, those standards, uh, which are actually governed by the NJDEP, cover things like recreator runoff reduction, water quality requirements, and groundwater recharge. Now, as part of the application, we also provided a schematic landscape plan. The intent of that plan was to have the back 160 feet of the property remain a combination of native trees and open areas. That is also the area in which our detention base would be constructed. The remaining perimeter areas of the property provide a combination of evergreen trees, fencing, retaining walls, and, uh, plants to buffer this use from the surrounding lots. I know there was a question before about lighting, and while a lighting plan, a formal lighting plan was not prepared for the use variance, uh, a lighting plan would be required for a site plan application. And we would illuminate this property through using, you know, uh, downward-directed LED lights, which typically can be dimmed to 50% of their intensity after hours. We're not going to propose any floodlights, any high-pressure sodium fixtures, or any metal halide lamps. With respect to other agencies having interest in the application, the project would need permits from the Middlesex County Planning Board, your local water and sewer department, and Freeld Soil Conservation District, which is an agency that governs land disturbance. We also expect to receive reports from the Borough Fire Official and the Police Department. There are other aspects of the project which pertain namely to traffic, trip generation, and the building itself. Uh, will be addressed through the testimony of either the traffic engineer or the project architect. Are there any questions at this time?
Mark, just a couple of questions before I let the board, uh, ask you some questions. One of the comments in the CME report was to consider, uh, having the access around this building be, be counterclockwise. And is that something that's feasible, and is that something that the applicant would be willing to do?
Yes, I started looking into it today, and I actually think that would work very well. So that's something I would like to draw up and, you know, present to the board at the, at the time.
Okay, so, uh, so in other words, and right now, you, if, if someone were to come in at this, off this site from Ryder's Lane, uh, they would actually, uh, the way you have it proposed now, they would circulate on the, uh, on the su- on the southerly side of the building, and then traverse around the building on the westerly side, and then ultimately to the north side. If we go counterclockwise, it would be the reverse, correct?
Yes, and with that move, I was also looking into bringing the entrance from Ryder's Lane further north so that the geometry is not offset from the other drive aisles.
Okay, and obviously that would be a preferred, uh, traffic, uh, improvement. Obviously, I'm sure the county would be happy with that as well. And what about in terms of parking, if that's the case? Will you pick up some additional parking, uh, in that area over by Blueberry Drive?
Yes, if I move the entrance further north, then the row of parking that's on the corner would expand.
Okay, right now you presently have eight spaces there. Uh, we could accommodate up to 12?
I think 12 is the number, yes.
Okay, all right, and, uh, as well, there was also a comment in the, uh, CME report, and I think even in Mr. Barry's report about loading zones. Are you able to accommodate some designated and delineated loading zones on this site?
Yes, in fact, I, I want to propose, uh, at each elevator area, a, uh, 10-foot by 40-foot loading zone where you could directly pull in with a vehicle. So in other words, the curb line would actually angle in, so a truck would pull straight into that loading zone and get out of the drive aisle. And then they would be able to leave without impeding any kind of circulation on the site, and there'd be two of those such zones.
Okay, and in terms of, uh, refuse and recyclables, uh, there was also a comment in the, uh, staff report that, um, and I think it was this general comment that, uh, dumpsters or containers, recycling containers should not be in the residential zone. Uh, is there, is there the ability to actually relocate that dumpster to the, uh, back into the, uh, commercial zone on this property?
Yes, and when I reverse the circulation, the existing location of the dumpster fragment isn't going to work. So I'm looking at two different areas which are more near to Ryder's Lane for that.
Okay, and that would be within the B4 zone, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And finally, in terms of, uh, there, there was a question about an environmental impact statement, uh, which had been prepared by, uh, by the Boys Environmental, uh, dated, uh, I think it's dated in December of 2020. Uh, to your knowledge, uh, are there any environmental impacts on this site based on that report?
I have his report from December 23rd. Um, and it goes through the various inventory of the property and, you know, geology and soils and things of that nature. It talks a little bit about background noise. I think the main noise generator here is traffic on Ryder's Lane. And certainly this use doesn't generate much noise at all. You know, and then he goes into, uh, his summary discussion. Uh, and to be perfectly honest, as typical with any development, uh, that involves a piece of land that's vacant, you know, there was going to be some loss of green area that's unavoidable. Um, and that would apply whether or not a use variance was required or if it was a conforming use. So I didn't find anything specifically in his report that, you know, characterized an extreme, uh, detriment as far as environmental. I just want to clarify for the people listening. A lot of developments, when they talk about, you know, heavy environmental detriments usually involve people constructing in floodplains. They involve filling of freshwater wetlands, uh, reduction of buffers to streams, uh, things of that nature, and, and none of that frankly exists on this property, which is why you reached those conclusions.
And actually, his conclusion on page 20 of the report is that, and I'm just quoting, "The site is absent of any critical environmentally sensitive areas." Uh, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else you want to add, Mark? Oh, before we get to that, you, you, obviously, we're not going to go through it tonight. We'll, we'll do it at, uh, probably at, at another hearing here. But you've reviewed the CME report and the Higher Rule Report, and I'm, I'm assuming you're prepared to address all the comments therein. Is that correct? At least that as pertained to, uh, to site engineering.
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further of Mr. Lieber at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Marata, it's 10 o'clock. How do we want to proceed?
The, it, it is up to the board. However, it might be a good time to stop. The part of my concern is we, we do have a lot of people on, and I think it might be best for them to come next time when the engineer will continue testifying, and items will be fresh in their recollection. At that point, they could ask more questions again. That will give them that opportunity to do so. Also, if we continue, the, the two reports, I think are going to take a while to go through. So we're, we're looking at, we're, we could go to, uh, another hour just on the reports, if not longer. So, and then that's even before you'll be asking questions, the board members asking questions. We're looking at midnight, so.
So we're looking, we're looking at another hour and a half to two hours for the, the rest of the presentation.
That's not even with all witnesses, and, and then the, the, I don't think that'd be fair to anybody in this for it to go beyond that point. People lose interest, people drop off, drop off the call, residents will drop off the call. I don't think that's fair to them either. And also, let's face it, as we get tighter, we're not as sharp. So in fairness to everybody here, I think it's best to carry it.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I do have, uh, three other witnesses, uh, which we can reserve for, for next time as well. So I have my traffic engineer, architect, and planner.
Understood.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if we do do that, can we make sure this is the only thing that'll be discussed at the meeting and no other, nothing else brought up to the board?
I, 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 I think as long as there's no legal issue with that, I, I think that's definitely the way to go. This, uh, presentation is quite lengthy, and there are a lot of interested parties, a lot of questions for our board, a lot of questions for the, uh, the residents of, of Milltown. So yeah, I, Neil, could we do that? Is that, is that something we can do?
If, if I may, Dave, I'm sorry, I did miss it.
I just asked if this can be the only, uh, on topic on the agenda. No other, nothing else been brought, be brought in front of us in the next meeting.
Here's Mimi.
Did that?
I think we can certainly limit the public hearing to this item. We may have a, an item for completeness, just to be reviewed and scheduled for a public hearing, which is generally a fairly quick administrative piece. So I think that might be the only thing that we might have to fit in, but at this point, I don't really see a problem with limiting it to this.
But this I'm sorry, but this, this would come first, correct?
I actually, the completeness review, and I'll ask John as well on this, I think the completeness review on that item would be rather quick. And, um, they've been waiting a long time as well, uh, to have a hearing, so, um, I mean, they might, this, this, this application may go not only next meeting, but the following meeting as well. So I, I think if we do the completeness first, it might make more sense. John, can you weigh in on that?
Be happy to, Neil, but I don't know what we have lined up. I haven't, nothing's come across my desk yet, so.
I have one, um, item for sure, and there were, there was a potential for a second, so.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a single, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet, so I can't, can't opine on whether or not it's a quick thing.
The, uh, I thought you had seen it. I apologize.
That's
Okay. Uh, we can make it this, we can make, I, I just don't want to, I'm mostly concerned about, um, any time constraints we may be under. If we have to act on it within the next meeting, then we're going to have to put that on. If not, we can make this the only one. How's that?
I, I think the, the length, uh, of this presentation, which is not even half over, and the questions that are going to be asked by both the board and the public is going to take quite some time. Anyone Anyone on the board have any? Suggestions, input?
Could we possibly start earlier?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we're certainly amenable to that. Mimi, when is, when is the next meeting? Is it the seventeenth?
It's March third.
Oh, it's March third, okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, if we can start earlier, we're certainly amenable to that, and maybe we can get through that, you know, get through it on one night.
My only, Larry, my only concern with starting earlier is the fact that people work. And if we start too early, they won't have the opportunity to, to attend the meeting. You know, they're putting kids, they're taking care of the kids, they're having dinner. I, I don't want to jeopardize that. I think seven o'clock is a good time. The. I don't know if it makes sense to go earlier.
Okay.
Well, even if we could start at six thirty, I think that would be a little bit of help. Maybe you want to poll board members about it?
Neil, is there any issue with the advertised time of the meeting? Not, not Mr. Sacks's notice, but just the advertised time of the meeting sliding it forward?
We have to re-advertise.
Well, we would have to re-advertise our time and to go earlier, but I would still suggest that we carry forward notices that are already complete. But I, it does cause somewhat of a problem because they have advertised.
Member of the public just asked if we could schedule an off-calender meeting. Is that something we want to do?
Part of the, part of the issue with that is attendance. I have no objection to it. But sometimes people understand the meeting is a certain day of the month.
Yep.
And, and might not realize, okay, there's a special meeting, and then they'll miss the meeting.
Okay.
The, Mimi, I just want to go back to something you said. Did you say that other people have advertised for the March third meeting?
No, I said, I'd like to carry over the advertisements that have already been, have taken place for this to the March meeting. So they have to re-advertise all the two-foot list, et cetera. And they have advertised the specific Zoom identification and the time. So if they, if we change time, then they may be required to have to redo all of their noticing, which.
Let's keep it at, I recommend we keep it at seven. And unless there is a default aspect that would come with regards to an application, we can make this the only application.
All right, so seven o'clock then on March third?
We'll reconvene seven o'clock, March third.
Okay, let me just make sure my, my, I know Mr. Lieber texted me that he's available. Mr. Drabney, I'm assuming you or Mr. Miskovich will be available? March first?
Yeah, one of the two of us will be there.
Okay. And Leanne, you'll be available March third, I assume?
Yes, I will.
Okay, and I don't know if John McDonough is here. I know he had another meeting tonight, so he may not have even logged in here, but that's my plan, but I'll make sure he's available. John, you there? I don't think he is. Okay, we'll be fine for March third, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So Neil?
Yes.
Do we adjourn? Is there any other business we, we need to take care of?
I would just say open to the public in a general sense, not about the application, because nothing's been finalized yet.
You'd like to open public comment?
I, I, I think we.
You can't do that again, I don't think.
What's that?
You want to do? We should probably do a public comment not pertaining to this public hearing.
That's my point, yes.
Okay, so. If anyone from the public has anything to say. General, not pertaining to this application. Please raise your hand. And let the board secretary recognize you.
Anyone suck at?
We certainly appreciate everyone's patience tonight.
Mr. McDonough. I believe, are you?
Mr. McDonough is my planner. I think he wanted to be let in, but that's okay. You don't have to let him.
Yes to confirming, okay.
Yeah, he told me in the chat that he's fine.
I'm good, everybody.
Thank you, John.
Okay, sorry about that, Mr. McDonough. Then I see no one, no one who wishes to speak on any of general nature.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, there was a comment in there, and Mimi, I don't know if you answered this. Are the plans open to the public reviewing? That was in the chat.
Oh, the plans are absolutely open to the public, and they do need to make an appointment with me for inspection so that we can maintain. Social distancing, and I'll set you up in a separate room and, and we clean it in between visits, et cetera. So drop-ins, you know, we sometimes can accommodate, but it's best to call and try to make an appointment with me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just indicate this to Mr. McClelland and Mr. Plaskanka. We probably will have a revision to the plan. To you, based on some of the, some of the testimony of Mr. Lieber. And to Ms. Marquez's concern about Blueberry, we're going to look into that as well. So if we make some revisions, we'll get them into you. Okay.
Is there any old business to be cut before the board tonight? Mimi?
No, sir, but there'll be some old business that comes before the board in the next couple of meetings. But for tonight, I think you're good to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mimi, you got another hand up in the attendees?
I believe it's Mr. I don't know what.
Vandemere, Daniel Vandemere.
Yeah, oh, okay, because you're, yeah, I'm sorry, because you were muted, DM. Did you want to speak at the general public session?
General question, yeah. Can the plans be provided in a digital form so we don't have to make an appointment?
No, I'm not going to disperse them, but, because again, they do, they're changed, they're revised. And I need to maintain those here at the office. And I'm not sure we have the capability on our website to make them all available at this juncture. So it was advertised that you could make an appointment here, and that right now is the way we sort of have to do it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there any new business?
I had a, I had one. Go ahead. So I was reviewing the, the, the master plan, and I noticed that there were notes about.
Please identify yourself to speaking.
I'm sorry, Mimi, this is Randy Ruth.
Okay, Randy, thanks.
So as I was saying, I was going over the master plan, and I noticed that there were some notes regarding. Basically, more encompassment of historic preservation with it, within the Borough Planning Committee. And I had some. I guess some potential demolition, legal things that I had together. And also a list of historic structures and a map that I wanted to somehow provide to the Borough. Planning Board, but I didn't know the proper procedure on how to do that, how to present it. So I don't know if that's something that would be done now or in between meetings and brought up at a, at a later date, or what. So I was hoping at least to have advice on that.
What do you think, Neil?
I actually, I think that's great, and I think that it should be shared with John Barry. So that he can take a look at it. I think. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, Neil, turn on mine. In order for something formal to come into existence. We would need to undertake the preparation of a historic preservation plan element. It sounds like you've got something of an inventory working already. Is that, is it basically an inventory of structures?
Yeah, there's an inventory of structures, potential, well, I guess there were previous recommendations very, very long ago for potential historic districts. So I have that information, and then also what kind of ties into all this. And this goes back to our last meeting. Was a concern about demolition of historic structures within the borough. And there's, I put together some, some, basically. I don't know, I guess you'd call it an ordinance that's, that, that kind of gives the opportunity to. For historic structures to. You know, basically delay their demolition if they, they so happen to be on this list of historic structures and they meet a certain criteria.
So the, you know, the process is basically you have to have a, a, a plan in place, and then you can have an ordinance. If you want to give me, I don't know if we need to, this may take a while to discuss. If you want to do it all offline, you and I can talk, and then maybe we can revisit it. Again, with the full board, if, unless anybody has any issue with that.
That sounds really good to me. I'll, I'll reach out to you through email and.
Yes, Brandon, yeah, you can send me an email and we can get together at some point.
Just curious, Randy, where, how, how did you develop this list?
Okay, so this list is actually an inventory that was based off the Middlesex County Historic Preservation Inventory of nineteen seventy-eight. So this is something that's existed for a very long time, probably needs to be revisited. The criteria is based off of the National Historic Preservation Ordinance of nineteen sixty-six. So it's a pretty general criteria, and I've just been, for the past year, trying to put all this information together in one organized cohesive place. And at some point, it needs to be presented to Borough Council. Which would be the next step, which, you know, is part of the Milltown Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, that's one of the roles. So I'm slowly trying to put together the information that, that exists. And then trying to see what else the board and, you know, the, whether it be the Borough Council or the planning board need. And hopefully, if we need more, we can, we have enough information to potentially reach out and get grants for something much more comprehensive.
Thank you. Anyone else have any new business?
No.
Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Marquez, second by Mr. Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for your patience. We'll see you on March third at seven PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Everybody.
Have a good night.
Night, all.
Stay safe.